Hi, Decky. I'm just testing to make sure it's gonna show up on the live stream.
Hello, Tammy. I can hear you loud and clear.
Good morning.
Good morning. Wrong way, Jeff.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Dawn.
Hi, Jeff.
Ms. Dana.
Sorry, I'm getting used to Google meets versus the other in my speaker on an office in a different spot.
It seems like every time in here I gotta set it up.
No, seriously, I have like, like, I have for work, sometimes I do meetings on Teams, sometimes I do a meeting on Zoom, and then there's like another meeting platform that we have. So we have three different platforms depending on what the customers capabilities are. And now this one's a completely different, a different platform as well. So I'm just like, ah.
Alright, I think I gotta set up. Just a reminder, looks like we are broadcasting live already. There we go.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
Okay, I'm doing another test real quick. I think we've got it, but I just have to hear some sound here.
Hello. How's it working? Any luck?
Hang on, there's a little bit of a delay after you talk.
We're hearing you good.
Yep, we're good to go. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, I will go ahead and call this meeting of the Penfield School District Board to order, starting with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all. Jeff, will you go ahead with a roll call?
Dawn, we need to do the oath of office first before roll call.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we should get started with quorum to show that there's a quorum before the oath.
We can do that, ma'am. Abby.
Hey, Jeff, you can't have a quorum until you actually have the new members to take on to be board members. Because there's only three of the other board members who are not.
Jeff is a board member.
There's four, Kevin.
Oh, okay.
Sitting board members.
That's correct. Go ahead. You're right. Go ahead.
Abby.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Myself, Jeff Wolfersberger is here.
Thank you, Jeff. If you'd like to get started with the oath of office, that would be fine.
I would. Tim Wood, are you ready to go, sir?
Yes, I am.
Alright, repeat after me. I, Tim Wood.
I, Tim Wood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of office.
Discharge the duties of office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of a member of the Board of Education.
Of Penfield School District.
Of Penfield School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you, thank you.
Dana, you're up.
Okay.
Repeat after me. I, Dana Wells Jenny.
I, Dana Wells Jenny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member.
Of the Office of Member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of Penfield School District.
Of Penfield School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dana.
Sarah, you're up.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
I, Sarah Jones.
I, Sarah Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of Penfield School District.
Of Penfield School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sarah.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Okay, I would like to introduce our full board, our full new board, to our Penfield community. And we will do that with another roll call, Jeff.
Yes, ma'am. Sarah Jones.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Tim Wood.
Here.
Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Abby.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
And myself, Jeff, is still here.
Okay, I just want to remember everyone about our norms of collaboration and to keep that in mind tonight as we proceed with this meeting. Kevin, has anything been changed on the or added for the addenda?
Nothing has been added or changed.
Thank you, sir. And Tammy, we will now move on to comments from the public.
Okay, we had three people sign up this evening. I see two of them. I was wondering if Trevor Watson is on. Okay, well, we'll see if he comes in here soon, but I do know that Teresa White's here, so I will have Teresa White be our first one.
Thank you, Tammy. Members of the board, good evening. My name is Teresa White and my Penfield Education Association and co-president Tina Fleischer and I would like to welcome all of our new board members. You are starting, just as we are making an extremely important decision, perhaps a life-changing decision for our students and staff of Penfield Schools. The decision about the appropriate time for our return to school is an important one and needs to be made after looking at all of the current and most accurate data. The teachers that have been informed that they will be vaccinated at some point around the middle of February, we don't have a definitive date as of yet. This vaccination fully protects those who receive it after a series of two shots, which at the earliest will be three weeks apart. Epidemiologists and doctors are also stating that it takes two weeks after the shots have been given in order for the person to develop immunity. That means that the staff who choose to receive the vaccine will not be fully protected until the end of March. Please remember, even after the staff who choose to be vaccinated have done so, students will still not have that opportunity. Spread will continue, especially at the secondary level. The school experience will not be back to normal. Our students and staff will continue to need to wear masks all day, social distance at every point of their day. Food and drink will not be allowed in classrooms and among a number of other changing conditions. Caution must continue to be exercised. Also, per CCHD's recommendation, if a student or staff member has tested positive, the buildings will need to be shut down until contact tracing can occur. This can be up to three days per event. Padding, as has been developed in the elementary buildings, is not possible at the secondary level for many reasons. It's most foreseeable that our secondary buildings will be opened and closed multiple times throughout the winter and spring. This will be very difficult on parents, students, and teachers. Another concern about returning all students before the vaccination of teachers has occurred is that there will be some teachers who are unable to return due to their own health or their family members' health and will then need to deal with a shortage of teachers. The American Academy of Pediatrics has updated its guidance for school safety based on the latest research. The measures it includes are the controlling of spread in the community, which has recently been updated and been moved up to imminent outbreak again for our county, implementing layers of protection for staff and students, and coordinating closely with the local health experts. They feel that primary and elementary students are most likely to be able to return to school safely as long as all protocols, most especially masks and social distancing, have been followed. Cloth masks are strongly recommended for all staff and students over the age of two, as well as physical distancing and other measures. Governor Whitmer has stated that she would like to see all students back in school by March, and we, of course, would like to be able to do so as soon as safely possible as well. We have missed all of our students and care deeply about their success and safety. Penfield teachers have truly stepped up to care for our community and students, and we're asking that you now provide that same care in return. Nothing has changed since October when we were hybrid and virtual. In our community, the number of positive COVID cases remains high. Risk to students and staff remains high. Safety of all students and staff should be your number one priority at this time. Please know that our teachers are extremely excited to get back to their classrooms to be face-to-face with our students. However, whichever version of a return to school plan is agreed upon and when it is agreed upon, please keep in mind that for our students' safe and our staff's safety, it is necessary for us to return slowly and while enforcing that social distancing will occur. At this point, we're in the same predicament that we were in in October. Our community numbers remain high, which means it continues to be dangerous for our students and staff to be physically together at this point. It's also imperative that our teachers have adequate time before we are in person to get their rooms set up while simultaneously teaching virtually, ensure that safety measures have been put in place, that the students and teachers have had their schedules readjusted, and each building's protocols have been determined and shared with all staff and students, and that staff has sufficient time to find childcare for their own children. No matter which version of return is chosen and when return is planned, please know that this will be a bumpy ride for us all and that our teachers are only asking that you show our district that you truly care about our students and staff, their safety, and about the safety of our community, and allow for vaccinations to occur before placing us back full force into a very dangerous situation. Thank you.
Okay, our next person is Renee Lake. I believe I see her on the screen, so Renee, go ahead and unmute.
Hi there. My name is Renee Lake, and I never spoke on this type of forum before, so bear with me, but I just would like to say that I'd really like to get all the students back in person for learning, which was best for Penfield and our community, and pretty much we're like the only school left that has not returned in-person school learning. We're already way behind what we normally be this time of year. Definitely, virtual school has been a hardship for lots of people. I'm not saying that if people have reservations that they should not do virtual, but at least give the kids, the students an opportunity to go back to in-person learning if their parents deem necessary. Same goes for teachers. If they feel not comfortable and if the risk is way greater than the benefit, then they way greater than the benefit, then they can choose to not go back if that's what they choose to in their profession. Um and also, I guess the big question I have is when it is decided that we return back to school, um we received a letter stating that it would take a three-week transition time. And um I just want to know why it will take three weeks of transition time when we've been out since like March of last year. I feel like Penfield Schools and the administration has had plenty of time to come up with a plan to keep the kids or students and staff safe as possible. I realize there are risks, but um being an emergency department nurse as well, I've seen these um COVID-19 cases firsthand and I get that there is uh fear and things, but it's not going to go away anytime soon. And um with or without the vaccine, you can still transmit the virus. And uh we all just need to know that, you know, wash your hands, wear your mask, follow what protocols will be when they go back to school. Um I do feel like it is in the kids' best interest to go back to school for their overall health and well-being, especially mental health. Um it's been very hard for each family to try and work around all the changes. I'm sure staff as well. But um given Michigan as a whole, we're way behind other states in the nation. And also, Penfield in general, since I said before, we're like one of the last schools to go back. I mean even Lakeview went back today, um Gold Lake, I mean there's so many that have already gone back. And some that elementary never even stopped really going, um. And I think we can maybe follow some of the protocols they may have um put in place. And if they can do it safely, so can we. We need to get these kids back to school and that's that's how I feel. We wait for all these vaccinations and everything to get done. Um pretty soon it'll be summer again and that'll leave us a whole year of virtual learning. Which is not at par, if in my opinion, but that's kind of where I was at. I would just like you guys to keep that in mind for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh we had one other person. I still don't see that person on the screen. I'll say their name one more time. Trevor Watson, are you out there? Okay, well I will keep my eye on uh it so that maybe we can get him at the end of uh our meeting. Other than that, we're good to go.
Thank you very much. And thank you everyone for your import input. That really does help the board in making these uh difficult decisions for the betterment of our district. Um the next item on the agenda is 3.01 election of officers. Uh we'll start with the president. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion or a nomination for the president seat?
I would nominate Jeff for president.
Beat me to it. I'll second that.
Thank you everyone. Uh Jeff, would you like to do a roll call vote for president of the Penfield School Board?
Abby.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Myself would gladly say yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations Jeff.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Dawn at this point for her service over the last few months. And uh I'm uh I'm very happy that now she'll have a lot less stress in her life. And a happy new year to you Dawn.
Dawn, you have done such a great job. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that everyone.
Absolutely.
Uh moving on to.
Hey Dawn.
Yes.
I actually, now, does Jeff take over now or after we're all done?
He's more than welcome to take over at this point if he'd like to.
I do believe Jeff is the person who should be taking over at this point Dawn.
Okay, thank you guys.
Uh I will do my best to uh fulfill your shoes Dawn.
I'm sure you'll do great.
Next up would be vice president. Is there anybody with a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Abby for uh vice president.
I'll second that.
I will go ahead with a roll call on that. Um Dawn?
Yes.
Uh Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. And Abby?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations Abby.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Uh next up would be secretary. Um I will gladly nominate Sarah Jones for school board secretary.
I'll second that.
Thank you Dana.
I'm gonna just step in here a second and ask, can the board president actually make a nomination?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you. I was just gonna third you in case you needed me to.
I will do the last roll call. Uh Abby?
Yes.
Uh Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Aye.
Myself is a yes. Dana?
Yes.
And Sarah herself.
Yes.
Thank you Sarah. Next up will be treasurer. Do I have a nomination for treasurer?
I'd nominate Dana for treasurer.
I would second that.
I would like to um ask Craig if he's still interested in maintaining that role.
I'd be happy to.
I would nominate Craig.
I would second that.
Just writing this down here. Any other nominations for treasurer? I'll take that as a no. Sarah, would you like to do a roll call? First up. First up would be a vote for Dana.
Okay, a vote for Dana. Um Jeff?
Yes.
Abby?
No.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Craig?
Yes.
Um Dana?
Yes.
And myself would vote yes.
Well then, can I change my vote?
Yeah.
Just to make it unanimous? I didn't know Craig was gonna do that. I'm just kidding. I don't think I really can.
I I thank you very much Craig. I know you're you're still gonna be very adamant in the uh in the Treasury Department. Uh motion is passed. Um Dana, welcome as our new treasurer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to 4.01. Uh approval of regular school board minutes from 12/14/2020. Um as acting secretary, I have looked at these and I have um signed off on them.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as uh presented.
Second that.
Thank you Craig. Sarah, would you like to do a roll call?
Sure. Um Abby?
Yeah.
Da- Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, uh 5.01 procedure. This is an item that was removed from the consent agenda. Uh Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a non-action item, correct?
Correct.
Thank you ma'am. We'll move right into 6.01. We will welcome Eric Pessell from the Calhoun County Health Department. Welcome Eric.
So everybody. Hello. Eric has um been uh invited here to give some information based on a conversation we've had with superintendents over the last few months, so um my um welcome to the new board members. And appreciation given to Craig and Dawn for the work that's been done over the previous year. So uh Eric, if you would, there's a few points that we talked about earlier if you would share with our members.
Yeah, sure. Well, good evening everybody and uh I'm happy to uh participate in I guess what would be your first organizational uh school board meeting for 2021. Um that's always exciting and a fun time and um I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can because Kevin does know that I do have an affinity for college football and I'm also an Ohio State Buckeye fan, so.
My condolences.
I don't expect it to take that long tonight. Um please, uh so just a couple of points about um the local public health department, which I'm the health officer for the Calhoun County Public Health Department. And our relationship with Penfield Schools, specifically Kevin and his staff and really all the superintendents in the county and how that's evolved over the past um about nine, 10, 11 months now. So I think the first meeting that we had that was COVID-related with the superintendents was back in February of 2020. And uh we have met almost weekly since then. There might have been a couple of weeks when school was let out in March that we weren't together um constantly or weekly, but that uh changed fairly quickly as we moved into the spring, summer. And uh we've met literally every every week in person with all the superintendents. And then, of course, um I've had several conversations with Kevin and his staff um over various COVID issues that we were dealing with at the school. Um or just general questions, just because it was so complicated and and uh so much information out there that it just needed some more one-on-one clarification. So just to give the new board members that, you know, this has been an ongoing relationship for quite some time. I would like to continue that in the future when it's not COVID related. Um so we're gonna talk tonight a little bit about some definitions about, you know, some of the data that we look at for schools and some advice that I give the schools and I'm gonna make that clear that um when I speak to the superintendents and I'm speaking to you tonight, I'm here in an advisory role. Um I'm not mandating anything. Now, there are times when I could mandate something, but uh this data and how you guys make your decision moving forward on your class, in-class instruction versus virtual instruction is your decision. And uh I'll try to answer as many questions as you have uh moving forward. I would also like to say that it's the goal, I think of everybody, to get our kids in school as quickly and as safely as we can, and that's my goal as well. I just say that just outright. Um our numbers are trending in the right direction as far as what we're seeing in Calhoun County directly and the state of Michigan, and I'll speak to that here in a minute. Um and the light at the end of the tunnel, vaccinations are here. It's gonna take a while. Um school staff are in Phase 1B and that's uh if you listened to the governor last week, that started today. Um that was just an arbitrary date that that somebody in Lansing decided to put out there, but um we uh are working as quickly as we can through our Phase 1A and our high-risk seniors and things like that and we'll be uh working with the schools shortly. Probably more like February before we can get our vaccination clinics into our schools, but we're gonna do it as soon as we have the vaccine and are able to schedule those because we know it's really important for our teachers and staff. There um and hopefully we'll get a good uptake and people will be excited to take the vaccine. Um I've taken it. I've received my second shot. I had no side effects other than a sore arm. Um so just a little bit about numbers. Uh and then I'll just open it up for questions after that, Kevin. If if I missed something, let me know. Um so I want to go back two months. I want to go back to November 11th of 2020, which was one week before the order was given to shut down our ninth through 12th grade um to shut down our uh sports and to shut down our restaurants and bars in person. Uh that order was given on November 18th, but since this is January 11th, I just went two months before. We had numbers that were like this for Calhoun County. We had at the time, 3,932 confirmed cases of COVID. We had 85 deaths and we were getting 113 cases every 24 hours. We were getting a new 113 cases every 24 hours, which was giving us a positivity rate, and this is an important rate that we look at in dealing with COVID. Our percent positive at that time was 15.3%. What that means is 15 out of every 100 people tested were testing positive at that point, which meant that it was spread throughout our community. And really, the schools that were in person were starting to struggle operationally to be able to field enough teachers or parapros or staff to be able to handle all of their buildings. And and several of them were already thinking of going back to virtual just to get through the holidays even before the order was given, and that's just the truth of what what was going on at that time. Then the order came out on November 18th and fast forward to today. Our current number of positives, of positive cases is 7,224. We've had 186 deaths. But we only had 24 cases in the last 24 hours. Our percent positive as of January 7th, I don't have it through today. As of January 7th, our percent positive was 8.1. And we're at 237 cases per million per day. We've come completely down. Another statistic that we had on November 11th is between our two hospitals in Calhoun County, we had 47 COVID patients in our two hospitals. Our hospitals were on um uh I can't think of the term right now, but basically if you were sent there in an emergency, they would handle you in the ER. But if you were a COVID, they were looking for other hospitals to transfer you to because they were full. Um and that's kind of where we were at at that point in time. As of today, we have 15 COVID-positive patients between our two hospitals. You can see we've made a good job at getting our numbers down. Um and it's really come down in the last several weeks. Because we were still peaking back in in November and early December. We saw a slight uptick in the past week, probably coming off of the holidays where people still gathered. That's why we're at 8.1%. We've been as low as 6.5 before Christmas. Um but if we can get that percent positive to continue to trend downward, the best-case scenario is to get it below three. And then we're functioning more more normally, COVID-normal. And it's not as spread in our community and therefore the school won't have as many exposed individuals that they have to quarantine and students won't um be exposed and then end up being a positive and we have to contact trace through the school. So things just get a lot better when that percent positive number goes down. And that's what we're hoping to do. So I I guess um if you look at the order that was given back on the 18th, it's had some success. Um there's really no other explanation for why the numbers did come down. Um and I would expect this week, uh probably on Wednesday, the uh MDHHS Director Gordon will issue a new order. And I would expect that order to open up. and I would expect that order to open up, I like to call it a valve. He closed those valves down in restaurants and bars, and he had closed them down in schools, but right before Christmas, he'd opened them back up. I expect him to continue to open those, and I expect that there'll be others that will be opened up as well. You know, not all the way, but they'll be opened up. Whether or not that means restaurants and bars will be open, I don't know, but we'll find out probably this Wednesday. I think the biggest thing for schools is, what is, what are they going to do with sports? And I, I have a gut feeling that says they're going to open the valve and allow sports to, to move forward, but that's just my gut. Don't trust it. We'll see what happens on Wednesday. I don't have any inside information. Kevin, I think with that, I've gone over a lot of information, and I'm sure there's some questions, so I'll just open it up.
Hey, Eric, before you take questions, will you share how, not just the county, but how each district had numbers that you were sending to them based on their township and their community?
Yeah, so my staff was able to, we have a, and I don't, have you sent the tool to them, Kevin? So, they have that?
Yeah.
So, you've seen the matrix or the tool that was put together by the folks up in Cat County, and, and we really liked it in Calhoun because we were really looking for something that could get us to go from, if we were in a virtual position, how do we get to in-person? People were asking that all the time, what's the number have to be? And so, you know, a lot of smarter people than me and epidemiologists looked at it and said, you know, this is what makes sense both scientifically and, and with regards to COVID and, and what we can do. So, we, we looked at, how can we get numbers for the individual school district? So, what we're doing, we do a countywide cases per 100,000, and then we do a countywide percent positive. And we do that every week, and we give it to the superintendent so they can track it and, and plug that into the matrix. And then, within each school district, we have the ability, working with our county GIS system that has the geocode for your school district by address, by road. We can tell our cases per 100,000 for the past 14 days within your geographic school district. So, then we can compare that to the county and say, is your district doing better than the county? So, maybe you can reduce your risk in that, in that thing. Is it doing worse than the county? So, maybe you need to, to increase what you're doing and maybe pull back more? Or is it about the same as the county and just, you know, utilize the risk that you're at, that you're, that that matrix works? And so, we're able to give that month or a weekly, and I think if it's, it's just a tool, it's a guideline that helps us make decisions or helps you all make decisions because I think as the law has put it forward, you're required by law right now to at least make decisions monthly, right, Kevin? And what type of instruction you plan on offering? And I think that tool can help us with that.
Eric, I had a question for you about that specifically. Did that include then, since we're at about 40% schools of choice? Are we able to measure very clearly when we don't have a good percentage of our students coming from actually within those geographical borders? Are, are you able to give Kevin then more accurate information, or is that one of the things that we just don't know?
Yeah, it, it doesn't really matter where the students are coming from. It, it's, it's more focused on what is happening COVID-wise within your geographic district as far as the community is concerned. So, if you have fans, let's say, coming into your basketball games, this is what's going on in the community, and those fans would be part of that community. Or your teachers, even though they live elsewhere, that's what's happening within the Penn Field community. So, it's just a, it's, it's data for your community. It doesn't take into account people that live outside your community. It would be too hard, I think, to try and figure that one out.
Sure. Are we opening up to questions, additional questions in right now, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Eric, what type of additional information do you have about the spread of the new variant of the disease? What's being reported suggests that it's a, a very difficult new bug, not necessarily more dangerous, just a more difficult bug to slow down. Have you got any information about whether or not Michigan's experiencing community spread right now of that, that variation in the, in the COVID?
We have no information of it being in Michigan yet, but I think we should assume, based on having a major airport in our state, that it's here. What we do know about this variant, and we're talking about the UK variant, is it's more transmissible, and it might not be more lethal or deadly, or, or even, in, in some places, they thought maybe it wasn't making as many people sick, but I think they're backing off that now. It's just more transmissible, it's easier to spread. What that tells me is it doesn't take as many viral particles to make you sick. If it's easier to spread, it's less of an exposure. So, when we used to do contact tracing, we would contact trace and say that if you were less than six feet from somebody for more than 15 minutes, then you were considered exposed because they knew how much viral load you could get from somebody who was positive if you were that close to them for 15 minutes or longer. What this variant's telling us is, you know, I don't know if they'll change that, I don't think they will, but obviously, your exposure could be a lot less than 15 minutes, and then you could still become sick because of that. And wearing a mask is really important right now in the schools.
Sure, and Eric, if you could, the one thing that I've been trying to understand better is the, the idea of the COVID syndrome for those who have recovered from the illness, including teenagers. Because that's one of the things that I, I'm really concerned about is that, that 6-12 group that's more adult-like in their physiology, anatomy. Can you give us a better idea of what that entails, with the, with the syndrome that follows, if even if they, if they're affected, but they don't suffer from severe? What sort I'm looking for?
COVID. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's the, we haven't seen the syndrome here in Calhoun County. And part of that is because we didn't have a lot of child exposure until really we went back to school in September because for the most part, we locked our kids down since last March. So, there was one of the reasons why we had very little data on children was because we, you know, a few guys are parents like me, but my kid wasn't really doing a whole lot all summer and wasn't really going around and, and being in large groups. So, we, we haven't seen the syndrome yet, and I don't have the specifics for you, Craig, to, to let you know, you know, like what you would expect or what that entails, but I can certainly get that for you and run it through Kevin if you need a, a more in-depth of what that is.
I, I, it's been my experience with watching some of my 18, 19, and 20-year-old students that they are still suffering for months after from, you know, a lot of discomfort, pain that has been reported. So, it's one of those things that I really want us to, to take into consideration as we look at going back.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to say that we haven't had people that still have symptoms or still have maladies after they've so-called recovered from COVID. But I was thinking more of the syndrome where we know that there's a secondary issue with some of our young, younger children that have had this, and that's where I thought you were going. But no, we do know that there are some longer-term issues that have been going on in, in, in the, the older, I'll call it the older adolescent age group. And it's certainly something to, to, you know, there's a reason why we want to protect our kids still, even though, you know, we're not seeing it be lethal in our, in our 0- to 17-year-old population. It doesn't mean that there aren't long-term effects that can happen from somebody that has a severe case or even not a severe case. There, there's, that's what's weird about this virus, folks, is it, it, there's no rhyme or reason to this. It's, it's all over the board.
Sorry for the imprecision in my question, Eric, I do appreciate your information, though.
Yep.
Eric, could you walk me through the process? We're back in school, someone tests positive, what do we do?
So, it depends on who the someone is. So, let's, do you want to start with a student or you want to be a teacher?
Let's start with the student.
Okay. So, student tests positive, more than likely, the family is what we're hoping would let the school know first because there's so many cases going on that for us to get the information, it has to be input into a system by the lab that tested that student, and sometimes that can take a day or two. So, the quicker we can have the parents contact the school, then the school will contact me and my staff. And we'll file, and we'll start an investigation, we'll reach out to the family, talk to mom and dad, find out where the student might have been, and then at the same time, the school, if that student was in school, and let's say the student was also symptomatic, let's call them symptomatic at this point. So, if they were in school prior to the positive test, and let's say that, you know what? They didn't feel good, so they didn't go to school on Wednesday. But they were in school on Monday and Tuesday. When we contact trace, we go back 48 hours prior to symptoms because we know that people are, are contagious with the virus up to 48 hours before they ever show a symptom, which is why this thing is so easy to transmit. Because you're perfectly healthy, you don't even have a cough, you don't have anything, yet you are contagious and can transmit the virus for up to 48 hours prior. So, the school will go back to 48 hours to see who possibly would have been considered less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. If it's a younger kid, sometimes that's hard to do, and that's where we sometimes see a whole classroom get quarantined because there's just no way of knowing who was what, where, when, and why. Most of the older kids, what we've seen, and, and I know Penn Field hasn't been in class yet, and the older kids, but in the schools that have been in class, assigned seats really help, and keeping them as distant as possible has really helped in contact tracing and limited the damage, if you will, of who would be quarantined off of that individual. So, it's, the school works with us and my team, and we come up with the best information we have, and we just ask those that were close contacts, and I've defined that as less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. We ask them to quarantine at home.
Okay, and then if it's, if it's a teacher?
It's the same process, only we expect the teacher is telling the school. And so, we will be notified, and, and the way this has happened, we are typically notified by the school before we can notify the school because the, the lab hasn't put it in the system yet for us to know. The teacher finds out, the teacher lets the Kevin or his staff know, and then they'll be reaching out to us, and, and we'll be starting that out. We'll be investigating, calling that teacher to do a, an investigation to find out where they've been, who they've been with. At the same time, the school will do contact tracing, especially important because Kevin and his staff will know, was this teacher a floater? Was this teacher in a room all the time? You know, that will help with who, who potentially could have been exposed. And we've seen it all over the board. I know that the lessons we've learned is really speaking to our teachers too is, you know, behavior change of what maybe they used to do before COVID, where they might gather in a lounge, or they might eat lunch together, to do that in a separated manner so that if you get a positive, you don't knock out half the staff. And we've had to do that, so we've had schools that have had to go virtual for two weeks because they just didn't have enough staff to teach. It wasn't because of a bunch of COVID-positive, it was one positive that knocked out seven staff. So, working on things like that, and Kevin and his team will have to, you know, really work hard with the 6 through 12. If you go back in person, those teachers really need to understand that, you know, as much as possible, staying separate from each other will help if one of them becomes a positive.
Just a clarifying question, when you're talking less than six feet, more than 15 minutes, is that regardless of mask wear or not?
It is regardless of mask wear unless somebody was wearing the full N95s, then we could, then we could talk, but it's regardless of mask at this point. Masks, not 100%.
When it comes to the contact tracing, so we, we've identified somebody's tested positive, they have symptoms. I guess what I'm looking for is, depending on the contact tracing, do you quarantine the entire class? Do you, how, how severe does it get, is what I'm looking for, more of a potential shutdown if we go back or?
So, the, the answer is, the simple answer is yes, but I'll explain. So, like I said, sometimes in the younger classes, it's harder, and I think we've experienced this in some of our elementary, right, Kevin?
Yes.
We had a couple, and we had to maybe, you know.
Yeah.
A classroom. If, if you can't, if you, if you really can't tell because it's just the way the kiddos are in kindergarten, first grade, and you really can't tell who was where and who was a part and, and all of that, then we, we typically will say, let's, let's take the classroom out and quarantine them for the 10 days. Now, quarantine has been reduced from 14 to 10, which has helped as well. That all happened, uh, back in October, I think. So, that has helped. But typically, the older students, we don't see whole classrooms because we're able to assign seat them, and we're able to give them the direction that says, stop gathering.
Thank you.
Yep.
Welcome, Eric, a few questions for you. One, you have stated before about the COVID not being spread, your belief was COVID not being spread amongst the schools, but more brought in from the outside. Are, are you still standing by that?
We are, although I'm a little concerned, and, and I'm going to say this out loud, I'm a little concerned with our athletics and extracurriculars that, that, that surround that, and it's not, it's not so much the practice or the game. It's that group of kids tend to gather outside of the sport, and, and that's where we have found some group COVID positives. It was, you know, it might have been part of the football team, but it really didn't spread during football practice or a game. It was, they all got together at so-and-so's house on Saturday night. And it's that group activity that happens outside of where you can make sure they're wearing masks and make sure that they're doing things, that seems to be the problem. I would say that for the most part, our schools did an excellent job following protocol, and that's important. If you follow protocol, we didn't see, what you're saying, Jeff, we didn't see spread. We didn't see outbreaks in our schools. We saw a lot of cases, but we never tied them back, and I won't say never. Many times, we could not tie them back to, because you attended school, you got COVID. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We don't want kids that attended school to then become COVID-positive because they attended school. So, if we follow protocol, that's what we're doing, is we're, we are reducing the risk of transmitting the disease by following the protocol. And as long as they do that, and the teachers hold them to it, and the teachers hold each else, each other accountable, we shouldn't see, from my experience, we shouldn't see outbreaks in our schools.
Okay. As a matter of fact, I was on the Calhoun County website, or excuse me, state website where it breaks down region. Last updated, January 7th, for Region 5, Calhoun County. Correct me if, if I'm stating this wrong, and there's anything that you don't agree with. Outbreak is something that's considered two or more cases. Out of 63 outbreaks in the past 14 week, or 14 days, 40 were long-term assisted living. Does that sound right?
Yeah, right now, that would sound right, yes.
Obviously, most schools were shut down, so that number is going to be down.
Yeah.
But you have reported three total quote-unquote outbreaks in K through 12 over the last 14 days.
That make, well, I didn't even know that, but yeah, okay. I would have said three total for the whole, the whole time, but okay. So, I understand that the definition is two or more, so it gets, and it's really, when, when it's only two, it, it's like, it likely could be an outbreak from the school because, because of the association that we've been able to make between the two cases. It will show itself more if you have like six, seven, or eight. Then you can say, yes, this definitely was because this classroom at this time, you know, was able to pass it on.
So, bottom line from, from your professional opinion, if, if we can get everybody to do their due diligence and, and whatnot, the, the chances for an entire school building, in our case, we have five, the chances of an entire building being shut down is, is slim, can we say that?
I would say, based on our experience in the fall, yes, you can say that. But most of the high school, middle schools from the fall experience were hybrid. Um, but most of the high school, middle schools from the fall experience were hybrid. A couple of the smaller schools were five days a week. So I think. You know, you have to take that into account as well as how much gathering we're doing in that age group. But yes.
What have you seen then from, um. Other districts right by us that have had, uh, six through 12. In person of, of some sort, um.
I don't think anybody your size has been six through 12. Five days a week, but you've had plenty that were hybrid, six through 12. And they've been able to function very well, very highly. I don't think we've had to shut any of those. Buildings down because of an outbreak. Um, I'm just thinking in my head right now, I don't want to call out other school districts, but we had a small school south, south of Battle Creek. That had to, um. They had a building that had to go on a 14-day, uh, virtual. But, um, it's rare that you have a whole building. I think in Penfield, didn't we end up with a couple of classrooms, Kevin?
Yeah, we.
Building, it was like a third grade or something?
Yeah, but it went from third grade to fourth grade to where then it was operational, meaning we didn't have enough staff or stuffs. And then it did become a building situation.
Right. So I, Jeff, I think to answer your question, it's more likely in my experience. That you're gonna have an operational issue that will cause you to have to go virtual because you don't have enough staff through the contact tracing. Than it being due to an outbreak. If everybody follows protocol.
Okay. And, and I think last but not least for right now, um, I'm not even sure if, if you're aware, but, uh. State officials came out at 3:38 today. Um, confirming that 99.6% of tests for high school athletes that have been performed have came back negative.
Is that for the state championship athletes? Yeah, the current ones that are in the.
Out of approximately 1,000. High school athletes that have been tested, 96, 99.6% have came back negative.
That's excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. No, I didn't know that. I'm glad that they put that data out there. I know we have a few teams that are currently in the, in the playoffs and, and around Calhoun County, so. Uh, I hadn't heard that we had any positives here in Calhoun and that's good news.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just have one more. Um, so according to the chart that you mentioned earlier, um, that came out of Kent County, um, with the recommendations, um. With last week's data plugged in for Penfield, um, that put us in the orange on that chart. And the recommendation for orange was that, um, elementary is probably safer in person. And we could, we'd take precautions at secondary, but there, some in-person learning could happen. Is that still? Accurate in what you would feel professionally?
Yeah, I think what that would say is more than likely when they say, take measures to reduce. To reduce your, um. Whatever it says, it says, take measures to reduce something. What they're talking about basically is going to a hybrid model. So your classrooms, instead of 28 in a classroom, you have 14. Um, and, and I think Kevin has a model that he's looked at and, and will be presenting, so. That's where that would put it as a recommendation. Um, and I think is, uh, the key to that whole tool is to drive that percent positive down. We get that down to 3% and we, we could, we can open up.
So Eric, just to follow up on Sarah's question. Um, what's your hunch? In terms of now that we've had all of nine months, uh, under our belt with this pandemic. Uh, what's your hunch in terms of the fact that we had the, uh, outbreak after Thanksgiving? Uh, in terms of a timeline for us understanding. What our outbreak level might be here or increase might be as a result of Christmas and New Years. Are we at that point where we're past the concern over, uh, uh, having a spike or what, what's your, what's your gut tell you?
Like I said, I don't like to use my gut. I like to use the data. The data is telling me that we've seen a little uptick. Like I said, we were down as low as 6.5% before the Christmas holiday. Since the Christmas, New Year's holiday, we've seen it tick up a little bit. Um, you know, I saw numbers last week where we, we're, we had a day that we had 56 cases in 24 hours and 40 cases in 24 hours and. What that means to you is all summer long, we were at 10 cases within 24 hours or eight cases and. You know, we, it was really down. Um, so, and then what also that means, just so everybody understands. Let's say you have 10 cases. Those 10 cases are gonna all get a phone call and they're gonna identify close contacts. If they identify three close contacts apiece, that's 30 additional phone calls my staff will be making. To speak to those folks to let them know they've been exposed. That's for 10 cases. For 20 cases, double that for, you know, for, for 40 cases, double that again. So. When you get 50 cases, what that really means is about 200 phone calls in a day. Trying to get ahold of these folks to let them know they've been exposed. So it becomes very difficult to contact trace and I personally, just to let you guys know. I didn't really understand fully in the beginning how important contact tracing was to this whole thing because. All of the orders that came out early talked about our ability to contact trace, our ability to contact trace, and if we didn't have that ability. We really couldn't move to the next phase. And I didn't understand the importance of that until we couldn't contact trace because the sheer numbers. And that, it just sparked wildfire at that point because we couldn't get people that had been exposed. We couldn't let them know so they could stay home, not go to work and then spread it and spread it and spread it. So. But it tells me right now, Craig, to come back to that, that we've seen a little uptick. We didn't see a big uptick after Thanksgiving either. I think in Calhoun County, our, our folks, our citizens did a great job. Um, I know we messaged you really hard on what to do and how to do it properly. And to try and keep it limited to one or two families. And I think they did that for the most part. Um, I'm sure that we had gatherings on Christmas and that's why our numbers ticked up a little bit. But they're not going up drastic. I don't, I'm not. I'm not, I'm knocking on wood. Um, I'm not concerned they're gonna continue that direction. I think they'll turn around and go down. Um, it, you know, in another week.
Thank you for sharing the science.
Ba- based on that, in your experience with some of the smaller schools that have been going five days a week. We're assuming here, we are heading down in the right direction after this uptick. What are your views on going back to school five days a week? But doing all the diligence, the masks, the six feet?
I, I think a school your size, you gotta be careful with the older kids is where I'm, I would come down right now, based on where we're at right now. I think that tool is. Is pretty accurate for what we see. In other words, when it started going up. Cause we've lived through this, it was down when school started. And we lived through what, what it meant for that to go up while kids were in school. And it wasn't just the kids, it was the teachers and the parapros that all of a sudden got knocked out, got knocked out. Not because they were at school, because they were somewhere else for a weekend or they had friends or whatever, and that knocked them out. So it became a, almost like a chess match of how to, how to operate your school to get enough staff there. To be able to properly instruct the kids. And I think that's. If you guys could have heard a couple of calls I had with superintendents of districts that were in person back in. Before the order, so this would have been about November 11th in that, in that timeframe. I mean, they were calling me up and saying, Eric, we can't, I'm gonna have to go virtual because I can't field a staff. And it was, um, it was, it was a mess and it's because that, that percent positive was just spiking. And so it was everywhere. If we can keep that percent positive down. I don't expect us to have that and I, but I would, um. I would be cautious about the older kids, cause that's also, I, hopefully you've seen a graph of that as well. I don't know, Kevin, if you sent that out, but. Our older kids are definitely, um, more, ha- have had more positive than our younger kids in our, in our. You know, 14 to 17-year-old age demographic, definitely they've had more positives than, than anybody younger.
Gotcha. So ju- just to paraphrase to make sure I'm, I'm understanding, the real threat to. Our t- our staff numbers to our high school age kids. Is the, the outside of school activities not necessarily being in school?
It, well, yes, um, and the fact that you can follow good protocol in school and I think that's important and that, that proved to be. Extremely important all fall for those schools, even in the midst of chaos. They were able to follow protocol and like Marshall and Battle, or not Battle Creek Public, but Marshall and Harper Creek. Who were running a hybrid for the six through 12, they were still able to keep those kids spread out, keep them masked where they weren't seeing a problem. I can't say that they would have had that same re, um. Uh, outcome had they been full five days a week. Uh, we don't know that.
Fair enough.
Can I just ask one quest, one more question about the five day a week? I know you're trying to get to a football game, but.
I'm watching.
The small, the smaller schools, so, um. What, the five day a week, were they still able to social distance within the classrooms? Because of the size, the number of the student body, is that what the difference was?
For the most part, yes, because they all had certain amount of virtual students that cut their classroom size down. If you can cut a classroom down to about 18, I think you can pretty well social distance in most modern schools now.
Okay.
And that's the problem is when you're 24 to 27, 28, it's really difficult. But because I think they were seeing about a 30% virtual, that was helping with their classroom size. So it was a whole.
Thank you.
Eric, I did have one last question and that was, um. Is there, um, any type of certainty that you can provide us, uh, about? Uh, a, a date for, uh, vaccinations of the faculty and staff? Uh, and, or you could move Penfield to the head of the line?
Well, well, we were, a couple of superintendents, they wanted us to go in alphabetical order and that. I, uh, all I can say is that one, we don't have enough vaccine right now and that's a problem and we're not getting enough vaccine. Locally or in the state for us to be able to ramp up and really do. What we need to do, we're gonna have to, um, we're gonna be vaccinating for the next nine months, 10 months. At, at least, probably longer. Um, we just don't have enough vaccine yet. So when I have more. When I have a better idea of the amount of vaccine that I can get my hands on. Then I can have a better idea of when I can start. Um. Start scheduling those clinics and, and because I meet with the superintendents every week. I'm asked every week the same question, Craig, so it's not just you. Um, and I'm gonna give them the same answer, I'm hoping by February. But as Kevin knows, um, hope and a prayer will get you maybe two bucks. Um, I'm just gonna, we're gonna do the best we can. We know that our 65 and older population that, that also got moved up into 1B. We know that they're a high risk and we really need to focus on them. So that probably stalled a little bit of our timeline that we would have gotten to the schools. But schools are still high on our 1B list. And I would expect that, um, you know, sometime in that month of February, I would hope that we would be scheduling clinics.
Yep.
The best answer I can give you.
Eric, is it true though that, uh, teachers and, uh, daycare staff? Um, were able to reach out this week and schedule appointments as early as this Friday?
No. No. I don't, I don't have any clinics for teachers or daycares yet.
Okay.
55 and older, um, we were able to schedule a clinic this week and three clinics the following week.
You said 55 or 65?
65 and older.
Oh, okay. I thought, I was trying, I'm trying to see if I was hearing that right.
65 sounds good.
So in, in Calhoun County, the way we're gonna do our schools is we're going to do clinics in our schools. So, um, you guys have a nurse in your school, I'll be able to deploy. A couple nurses, Kevin and, and my staff will work it out. And, uh, you know, and we'll be able to come there and be able to vaccinate whatever, whoever is willing to get the vaccine. And then of course, it's a two-dose process, so we'll already have the next date scheduled at the same time. It's three weeks later, it's 21 days later. Um, for Pfizer and that's what we have is Pfizer. So, um, when we do Penfield, uh, you know, we'll do them once and then three weeks later, we'll come back and do it again. We should be able to run all the, all the people that want to get it through in one day, it should be no problem.
And that's gonna be all district staff, which I'll, I'll share my superintendent comments when I get toward the end too also.
Yeah, it's, and basically anybody affiliated with the school can get it. Except, I'm sorry, the board, the board of education members.
And I was like, man, you better, you better say something, you better give me a trouble.
There, uh, uh, there's another superintendent that called me and said, well, one of my board members is also my after-school counselor for something that, you know. And I said, well, okay, that's fine, that, that, that person's an after-school counselor, they're not a board member getting the vaccine. So yeah, it has to be somebody who would be. In the school or, you know, around the school system daily that would be exposed.
All right, do you have any more questions for Eric? Eric, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your time and, uh. Good luck with the football game, sir.
Go Buckeyes.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Good luck on your decision. I'll support whichever way you guys go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh.
All right, like to move on to.
What? Got my little music going here.
6.02 ECO-L, Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan?
Yes, um, Jerry is going to, um, share out the, um. The report and it usually takes five or 10 minutes, but it's, uh, has to be done each month. And he can also explain that also. And so Jerry. If you would. You got your, uh, mute button there, Jerry?
I did that last month too.
Yes.
Um, again, uh, I heard me, but you probably didn't, that, uh, congratulations to. Not only new members, but those that are, uh, officers and welcome aboard. Um. We have a requirement monthly to report out on, um, it's actually reported the past. Of what we did as far as, um. Instruction during the COVID crisis, but more importantly to me is the rate to which we were making contact. With our students and our families. So I'm gonna share that report. I'm going to, uh, present it on my screen to you. And Kevin, if you would, if I start to go garbled, let me know. So I can, uh. Adjust a little bit here, but this is our reconfirmation meeting for our January 11th. It is posted on our website next to our original plan that was developed back in late October. The, uh, plan has had reconfirmation for now three months. And the information from board meetings, as far as any change that may occur to the instructional method. Will then be posted into an organization's website called SEPI. And this is, uh, basically. It is educational data collection that the state of Michigan uses. So this is reconfirmation, talks about the past. Whereas, um, any decision made tonight would go into February's report to SEPI. So as you know, we were pretty much, uh, virtual and our public, though they did not complete the. Um, online survey that we have posted on our return to learn page. We did have public comments through a survey that. Mr. Simmons, um, and the principals were generating data from. And they talked about three versions of instruction and variations of each of those. And we have those, um, comments that are part of our decision-making model and of course, your decision-making model. But if you look at the bottom, that's the part that I think is most important and I'm gonna blow it up even a little bit more. Um, December is always a weird month in schools. So our first two months, we had incredible. Um, two-way interactions and a two-way interaction is the state of Michigan's. Legal definition of attendance and of, um, schools providing for the needs of. Um, our students and their families. The, uh, percentage that is set for, um. A goal, if you will, is 75%. However, in a time of, uh. School financing be based up, being based upon this rate, we're not looking for 75%. We're looking for low to mid 90s as our goal. First two weeks, we were awesome with that. Um, and then if you take a look at the third week, um, it looks a little sketchy at 84%. Um so two things on it, one, it was only a three-day week. Our week actually starts on Wednesday for this, and that was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of Christmas break. Um so our interactions were a little bit less, especially for for um uh our older kids. But also, we did an investigation, and I asked principals to return back to their staff and say, did you forget to put this in? Because normally, they would have done it on Monday and Tuesday of the following week. Um, long story uh cut a little bit shorter is that eighty-four percent in reality, right now, as of six o'clock today, is closer to eighty-nine to almost ninety percent. So we're back up to where we need to be. And of course, the last week was our winter break, where we did not have interactions. So that's my uh report for this month. Um, there are a lot of reports due this week um and this month to the state of Michigan to include professional development and trainings that we offered to families and to staff. That will be due this Friday and posted to our website. In addition, we will um give a report on our um achievement status um as a benchmark. It's only mid-year in mathematics and reading as measured by our N W A test. And that will go in shortly, um yeah, about mid-February, when our N W A testing is done in all the buildings. So the mandates keep coming from the state, and I think we're, we're pretty good, we're on top of it. Any questions for me on this report?
I have one, Jerry.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Hi, Jerry, um I'm just wondering what, what it is that like for the five percent that shows that we're not making a contact with, what are we doing for those students? To fix that?
So I'll um, I'll be the second resource as far as what principals have told me. Um and basically, it's, if you took the five percent and broke it down, it's a combination of those kids that maybe have never reported but are still on our rosters, because we don't know where they went. So we, we have to maintain them until we can find out they're in Kentucky, uh they've, they've went virtual with an academy or whatever they've done. And so that changes our, our percentage a little. And also, there, it might just be that um the, the student tuned out. So that kicks the principals into gear to gather that wraparound team, grab, gather that behavior specialist, start making phone calls, start, start knocking on doors and saying, okay, um uh virtually, what's going on? What supports do you need? Okay, you lost your internet connection, let's see if we can't hook you up with a hotspot or whatever you might need. But it involves re-engaging. Um, yeah, that it's, it's different every time that, that three to five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
And Dawn?
Oops, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna add to Dawn's question. We also have a guidance department that's coming in next month so that they can report out as to what we've been doing since the school year started and some extra layers that have come to um support that group of kids that we're trying to uh support through a Michigan Engage program and a um, oh gosh, I think it's called the um the health and wellbeing of students that uh even Trevor is gonna be able to talk on when we get to next month with the guidance counselors.
So I'm just wondering, like, at what point do we decide it's not really uh the teacher that's, you know, that the teacher's still doing their part, but it's beyond the teacher?
Yeah, when we find, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
Um, so that's a constant monitoring, and I work with the principals on, on defining that because it's part of um my evaluation, the principal's evaluation, staff evaluation, is that two-way communication rate. And Trevor and I provide training all the time on this thing, and the reports that we generate from a, a program called Illuminant. We can tell by um if, if the teacher says to uh the resource that's available in the building, I've tried this, this, and this, it's not working, I need help now, or I need to refer this child to, to the principal, that it's not really, that burden's not on the teacher. Um, they still keep trying to connect, but we rely on them to monitor the data, and then the admin will go after them with counselors, and they'll report that next month, it sounds like.
Yeah, the only reason I bring this up is back in um August, this was a real concern of mine about losing children in the chaos of COVID. So I just wondered how that would all work. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep. Jeff, did you have a question for me, sir?
Dawn took it right out of my mouth.
We do monitor this real closely, I'll, I'll tell you, we meet four or five times a month on this data.
Uh I just, I can't, I can't emphasize them enough that we are doing everything. Um it's been stated before, if we have to knock on a door, we will do that. Um, there are students out there that are not attending, I know for a fact, and have not been reached out to. So if we can, if we can definitely make sure, uh whether it's two percent or eight percent, if we can definitely make sure that we're, we're trying to touch base with, with those that are still in district that have lost touch with virtual learning for whatever reason, um that we are doing whatever we can to, to uh lead them back in.
Jerry, I, I did have a question. Um, I just to clarify what Jeff just asked. Um, do, when will we know if a student is uh doing virtual outside of the district? Is that something that nobody's required to, to tell the district, correct?
So I don't know if I should pass that on to.
Yeah, I can jump.
Trevor, if you could. Yeah, Trevor.
So um i- i- in that sense, i- if another school district has put in a claim for a student, we would be able to see that. Um, we can check on that. So uh i- if it was another virtual school, they would do that. They're, they're, they're able to claim F T E just like we are as a public institute. So, so we would be able to check on that through the state side.
And, and, and uh just like, I understand what you're saying then, Trevor. When are they able to claim them? So if a student, a parent decided to pull their kid out of school uh in October and put them into a virtual academy, uh when would, when would be the point at which that academy would then claim that child?
There's a couple of different ways um that they would report out to the state that we would be able to see that. If uh we claim that student for count day, there's a section called twenty-five E that they would, that the other, the new school would be able to claim a prorated F T E. And they would do that fairly immediately because they can get paid for that student still. And, and we're talking days, you know, maybe, maybe a week, um that you would be able to see that. Um, now, we're, what you could run into is a student who completely did not uh participate uh through October and then later on uh joined a virtual school, and there would not be an F T E for that student. And if that institute didn't put in a records request through us, and they didn't claim through the state, we might not see that until February, which would be the next count date. And that would be kind of your worst case, you know, what's going on? Because of course, our staff would be reaching out to uh family as well, saying, hey, you know, what's, what's going on? We, we miss you.
But for the most part, then, we're, we're, we are pretty close to understanding that we're at this uh student count at this point, and it's pretty, it's within maybe five or ten students. Would you say that's accurate, Trevor?
We are, you know, that's, it's a good question. I don't want to say we're, we're down to a certain number. I would say, yes, we're, we're awfully close. But Jerry also pointed out that we are carrying students who we haven't seen because we have not found them to be attending a new school. And so as to not just dismiss a student like that, we're basically taking the zero on participation, and, and that would prevent us from getting that hundred percent. Um, you know, Jerry, I think he has had some weeks where we're around ninety-five percent. And I would say, boy, you know, in a best-case scenario, I mean, we're, we're, we're probably up there ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. What would you say about that, Jerry? Pretty close.
Yeah, on, on any given week, um we've had buildings that were as high as ninety-nine percent.
Oh, there you go.
And I, I will tell you, there's a direct correlation with the age of the student and the participation rate in this two-way interaction. Younger, and, and you know what? It's the same correlation as if we were sitting um with students right in the seats on what attendance rates are. So it's not a surprise, it, it was predictable. Um, what I would have missed in my prediction is that we actually have, you know, a high nineties, a mid-nineties um two-way interaction reporting with staff. Um, we, when I meet with I C C members, which are area districts from three counties, um uh I, I proudly let them use our numbers as an example.
Right, and one percent is gonna be about twenty students. So that five to ten is probably, you know, in the ballpark, Craig. I mean, maybe, it, it could be more, but um it's, you know, closer to the tens than the hundreds for sure, yeah, no doubt about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Jerry, I just want to say thank you. I know that number was a lot lower at the beginning of the year. Um, obviously, teachers, everybody was, was still in the learning curve. Um, I would like to thank you for all the hard work you and your staff have put in on reaching out to these students and, and getting them back to class.
Yeah, it's a, it's a true partnership. The principals are the ones that do the legwork. So I uh, I, I fill out the reports and uh make sure that we interpret them correctly, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jerry.
Any more questions for Jerry or Trevor? All right, thank you, guys. Uh, at this point, I'd like to move on, six point oh three, education plan discussion.
Yes, so um I'm not gonna go back through all the data that was shared with Eric and the Health Department. But what I will share is, I am gonna go back through all of the options that were put on the table and discussed when I spoke with each board member uh during the week and the two and three times I've met with the administrative staff. And even today, having another administrative meeting, and I will be sharing that information also. Now, I put this in a PowerPoint, so I gotta tell you, Jeff, I, I won't be able to see anybody's face because I'm putting on the whole screen. So instead of raising your hand, you gotta say, hey, Kevin, hold on just a second, and then that way you can add in the question. But what I would like to do is go through, because it's gonna, the PowerPoint is only five slides long, and it's just gonna go right into it, is let me go through the uh K through five, and let's have that discussion about the options, and then we'll do six through twelve and have the discussion about six through twelve, okay?
Fair enough.
All right, I'm gonna pull this, like I said, this PowerPoint up, but I have to share, which is going to take me off the screen. Then, it's this screen. Then. Okay. I have the uh first slide up, we're good?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, awesome. So this is that K five, and these are those three options. The first one, which you will find the same when I, when I get to the six twelve, the first option is the same that was approved back in August of twenty twenty. So for our parents, that's the two days on a Monday, Tuesday, and then a Thursday, Friday. It's the same setup to where there are teachers that are teaching a class, and they also have virtual students, but it's the same setup from what we had when we first uh came in in August and what's been going through to this point. Then, here is a um option two, is a four-day in-person. Notice, I put in there what Eric was talking about earlier, there's little social distancing because with option one, half the students, the teacher is teaching the students, half of them on Monday and Tuesday, and then the other half of the students that they're responsible for are taught on Thursday and Friday. As Wednesday is used as a uh virtual day with helping kids in the transition. So they actually get two days in-person, three days with virtual. That's in hybrid in the first option. In the second option, the four-day in-person takes away the students being in half. So as an example, if there's a first-grade teacher at Purdy, she would have twenty-four students that she is assigned for first grade. Four of those students may have the parents saying, I want them to be virtual. That is twenty students that is in that first-grade teacher's class for the four days, while the other four days, the kids are virtual, virtual students, those other four, and only getting Friday to where they're getting content instructional support. Now, I'll tell you, based on uh the conversation with administrators, and I, I believe um if not all, most of the board members were not too excited about this option because of the fact that students whose parents are asking for their kids to be virtual only get one day to where they have a contact with their teacher for content-specific information. But the in-person students are there for four days, all day. So that is option number two. And I appreciate your patience and waiting, so I'm gonna go to this last option. Well, I can't say the last, it's the last one that was talked about this last week, is the five-day in-person, and it has little or no social distancing. This is five days, and I'm gonna use the same class as I mentioned earlier. It is, the number in the class is still twenty. Four students within that teacher's class, the parent still wants that child to have hybrid, excuse me, have virtual. So the first-grade teacher would teach five days a week with those twenty students, and the school would have one teacher that is teaching virtual students for virtual. Meaning that a parent, and we've had, as I shared with board members, uh a few parents have shared, their child is doing well in the virtual setting, and they would like to continue with their child in the virtual setting. However, their teacher may not be the same teacher for their child in that virtual setting. And don't get me wrong, we have more than one or two rock stars that are out there in our district, but it may not be that same teacher that is teaching only virtual students while there are teachers teaching five days for the in-person. And with those five days, again, that little or no social distancing that Eric uh was talking about earlier from the Health Department, saying so many kids in the room is not going to be the same as it was with some of the other districts and some of their uh students there because they have a lower amount of students.
Now, I. That, sorry, this is Dana, I have a quick question.
Sure, now, now it's time.
Okay, on average, what is a class size? Like, I mean, like, I mean, I know what my children's class sizes were when they were there, but what is the average right now class size uh for a K through five, like K through five? Um, just curious, based on percentages and stuff like that, based on his eighteen to twenty number?
Yeah, so we're like twenty in kindergarten, about twenty-two to twenty-four in first grade, twenty-two, twenty-four, second grade. Trevor, is that number higher, or is it, am I about right there?
I think you're correct for the current. I, I don't have the latest numbers with um any changes we have.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin, just to piggyback on that, does that twenty children, does that, is that all the students or only the ones that are attending?
Those are.
That includes the virtual, correct?
Yes, that, so that twenty for kindergarten, that is a kindergarten teacher. If we were back in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, that would be, I have twenty students sitting in front of me. And that's what, those are the students that I'm responsible for, you know, all day, taking them to lunch and those um uh uses of uh materials and supplies. So that is a teacher um roster, should I say.
So when we get to the point where we have a percentage of families that choose to stay virtual, that number per classroom will be lower?
Yes, and we've actually have, yeah, for kindergarten class, yes, that number would be lower.
Okay, thank you.
For a first-grade class, that number would be lower. And for the second-grade class, and uh I'm also gonna mention that when I. when I get to the last slide about some additional things that are coming into play as to trying to move these plans forward. So before I add, what the administrative team has shared with the difficulties, like Ms. Lake was asking earlier, as to the kids have been out, so why can't we just say they're back and they all be back? Well, there are processes and things that have to be put in place. So we don't have kids walking around going, where's my teacher? Or teachers saying, I need to get these supplies. So I want to share what some of those are, which is why I've asked the administrators to join us in this conversation so that I can call on them if I forget something. Okay?
So- Kevin, I did have one question for you.
Sure.
During the fall, if you could refresh our memories, do you have a, just a, 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 a brief snapshot of how many classrooms were shut down even under hybrid? For, for a quarantine for like a 14-day period?
Yeah. You're talking about their operational piece that caused us to have to close buildings and close classes. Yeah, we started out with, there was a, a third grade to where there was one teacher and then a second teacher. And then the third teacher, so the third grade was closed. Then there's one teacher that took place in the fourth grade. And then there was the contact tracing that said it may be another teacher to where the building got to a situation where we could not have enough staff to cover those teachers that were out. So there was a closure of the 10 days because it was after the contact tracing to where they were out for 14 days. That was two weeks. Well, we also had to where the third grade was out first. And then we had to turn with the fourth and fifth grade to where those classes, because of their timing and when they started, they were all able to come back at the same time. But they were out like 10 and then another 14 days. Based on it was teacher, not the kids. So when it was involved with those teachers, then yes, we did have some kids in the K2 buildings to where parents sent the kids to school. Then we found out from the health department. Then we had to go to the teacher and we had to go to the students in that classroom. So there were days that we had to quarantine certain classes also. Again, it became an operational thing that we kept saying, well, if we do this and we get this teacher to sub in, we had virtual teachers who were not doing well after they tested positive and were unable to keep up with. So it was, there was a kind of pockets of things that occurred that I'm sharing with you, Craig, in a manner which I still want to make sure that I'm being confidential with who those adults were. That's why I'm giving you the big picture.
Sure. Thank you.
Kevin, this is Sarah Newbecker. When you have a minute, I just wanted to make sure the board understands Dunlap's numbers are not that low.
Yes. Sarah, would you go ahead and share that?
Just, yes, just, of course, this is an estimate because we really don't know for sure yet what parents are going to opt for strictly the virtual option. But for example, it would be, I'm assuming over 20 minimum per class. If we go four or five days a week. We have third grades. My third grade, excuse me, is, has over, it's the highest population. So with everybody there, they're pushing 29 to 30. So let's say three or four choose the virtual option. Those are still high numbers for in-person. Social distancing will be impossible at third grade, for example. And then the fourth and the fifth grade are also higher than are, I assume, the numbers that you just said for the K2s. My smallest class, well, fifth grade and fourth grade are pretty close, but they're, they're still larger. So it's just going to depend on who opts for that virtual piece. And even then, I'm assuming social distancing is going to be a challenge.
And, and I'll just add, Sarah, to kind of simplify, at the, at Dunlap, their classes are not classes of 22 to 24. Their classes are 28 to 32 on average sizes.
Well, the 32 would be high, but we're, we average about 25 to 30 this year. Our, my third grade, I do have some third grades sitting at 30. Yep. But they are definitely in general, more middle school size because that's, that's our building size.
Sarah, it's Dana. I have another question. So even at Dunlap, they have 30 in the third grade and about 28 in both fourth and about 28 on average. I'm not, I mean, some classes may give or take a kid or two. So Dunlap, 20, 30, and then 28 for the two higher grades. That's a question mark.
Yes. Yeah, 28 is probably a little high. It's probably closer to 25, 26 on average this year. Our fifth grade class is pretty, you know, fairly small, not tiny, but just on average, just to give the board a feel.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Also, Kevin, if I could do the same.
Yes.
Principal at Purdy. So for our kindergarten, that number would be correct with taking into account the ones that we know are virtual right now, classes would be about 18. Second and first grade, however, are going to be with the students that we know are virtual right now, taken out would be somewhere between 22 to 25. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes, yes. Because of the number of parents that have been contacted to say, we're trying to know exactly about how many and what size that class would be based on those who ask for virtual and those who ask for in-person.
Correct.
While, while we're in this window.
I would say North Penn can give you the numbers as well.
Yeah. That's what I was saying. Courtney, if you would.
Yep. So according to the most recent survey that we had, and then we called all of our parents that did not take the survey as well. I have about 20, well, not about, I have about 28% that still want virtual for the K2 building. And then that, if I put everyone in classrooms, my class sizes are now 20 to 23, depending on the class and the grade.
Okay. So again, that's data and numbers and calls and connections that's been made when talking about five days or the, should I say, option three and option two compared to option one. Now, this is, I'm going to add this now because I know there's a question that's still there as to the timeline. And the timeline, once the decision is made and the, based on these options, the timeline will be based on the communication with parents and starting on the 18th that we return with our K5 options, the way we left, which was two days and two days. But I shared with the board that starting on the 18th with the two days and the two days, some of the things that are going to cause a question to make sure we can be ready by the 25th is going to be the work with changing teachers and students, whichever option is made. And the same thing with the actual hybrid students getting their teachers in that communication. As a matter of fact, I'm going to pause with that because those things I said are additional questions and additional information that's actually going to be on the last slide, which would be after we get through six 12. So let me just stay right here with the K5. Questions?
Yeah, this is Dana again. So North Penn said about 28% want to say virtual. Sarah, both Saras, Newbecker and Taylor, can you provide the Dunlap and the Purdy percentages, please?
I, I cannot at this point because I had over 200 parents not fill out the survey.
Okay.
We are still making phone calls and, and having difficulty getting ahold of families. In addition, Dunlap is a special circumstance because, as you know, we had to move teachers around before. Because we had very large numbers in our virtual. I had over 47 assigned to one teacher virtually. And so I had to balance those classes. We just made that change and so we're calling families to see if they're prepared to go hybrid on, potentially on the 18th because they were already virtual in the fall, if that's making sense.
No, completely.
I was just trying to actually get that kind of figured out for families and give them a heads up. So we're still in the middle of that transition. So that, that's kind of Dunlap's situation at this time.
Thank you.
At Purdy, we're about, let's see, we have about 50 parents that we've called and haven't heard back from. So we're still working on that, but as of right now, it's about 12% that have chosen to go virtual.
Okay. Just want to know if that helped. Other questions about any of these options? Or as before, there were other options that came up in August. So these are, again, proposed options. Why? Because we want to make sure that parents all understand that if there's other ideas that board members may have, then, you know, here's just options that are on the table.
Kevin, I have one other question.
Sure.
About K5 on the hybrid model. Can you, or maybe the principals can tell us a little bit. When we very first started school, there was a lot of incidental feedback that the three days that they were virtual, there wasn't really a whole lot of content available for those three days. And I'm assuming things have changed since then, but I wonder if you could give us an idea of what kind of content the kids are getting on the three days of virtual in the hybrid model.
Good question.
I can speak to that. Other principals pop in or Kevin, if you wanted to answer?
Sure. I, I would just start with this. I'm just going to start, oh, am I muted? Oh, okay. I thought you said I was muted. I would just start with the fact that as the process has occurred, teachers have gotten better and parents with a partnership in trying to get what's going to be working best for their kids. Now, I only say that because, again, we have teachers that are constantly working for that piece. But as far as the question, I will go ahead and let the building principals chime in for those who may have some information to share.
We've increased our teacher time with our kids, so they have a minimum of two hours a day with their kids. Actually, face-to-face, working with kids in addition to office hours. So families can pop on when they need to. And then we also have the assignments going on all the time and then they can have, reach support from literary aides, literacy aides, excuse me, meet with their special education resource people, aides and teachers. And so it's, we've really upped our game and have, we're doing a much better job. It's, it's not perfect. We're still learning, but it's definitely more content than it was in March. That's for sure.
Yeah, we're same. And then we also have additional supports if they qualify for title services with math or reading. And they'll get those Google meets as well. And then we've had some parents that have had to reach out and wanted additional help. We have the aides that will meet up with them as well and help them with, it could be a specific assignment. It could be a content, whatever their need is.
I just wanted to just clarify if I could for a minute. I'm, I wasn't really talking about teacher content or, or available resources so much as what do the kids have to work on while they're at home?
So at Purdy, I can talk to that. And I know this, it's the same at North Penn. We have something called CSOW that all teachers have and there are assignments on there that teachers assign. I know at North Penn and Purdy, we have packets that we send home with kids. And there's also assignments that teachers have. All grade levels have the same lesson plans. So all kindergarten teachers will be doing the same thing and assigning the same assignments to all kids.
And that's the same at Dunlap. We have CSOW. They're all using Google Classroom and obviously uploading assignments in there and all lesson planning together. So our students are receiving at grade level the same content at the same rigor.
One last question on K through five. What have you guys noticed on attendance these past three weeks of being 100% virtual for all K through five?
I've been surprised. It's been as good as it has been. We've been really working hard to make connections. Teachers are working really hard to make connections and it's really been in the 90-plus percent. Our students that we are struggling with, we refer to our student support team. That's what Jerry Neeler was talking about before. And that includes the principals and behavior folks and the counselors. And, you know, really, we grab folks to just make phone calls and to do lots of badgering, quite frankly. And honestly, these are the same families that struggle when we're all in attendance in person. These are the exact same families that would have attendance issues as well. So I'm not seeing much like, like Jerry spoke about. It's not much different than when we're in person. The attendance, the patterns are pretty similar.
I would say it's the same with the K2, the virtual, they were used to this environment, so they just kept rocking it. And then because we had the three-day virtuals with the hybrid setting, they just transitioned smoothly with the additional two days a week. So it actually went very well.
I would say the same at Purdy, although we, I feel like we increased some too as we went fully virtual because it ended up being something that some of those families that were scared of the technology just dove into because that's all they had. So we actually kind of increased a little bit with fully virtual.
If, if I could address the item that Courtney brought up. And that was, of course, the, one of the major ways in which we're evaluating this COVID period is our NWA scores in science and, and reading. Have all of the principals and all the teachers been addressing science and, I mean, math and reading with the same type of enthusiasm in terms of making sure there's a lot of emphasis on that and reaching out to parents to help them with that?
Yes, they have. That's the nice thing. We have all of our teachers in a PLC meeting. So they all, North Penn and Purdy teachers meet together to make sure that they have the same I can statements for every single subject. So that way that all students are receiving the same amount of work, rigor, all the above.
If I may, just chime into at this point about the number of kids who parents wanted their kids to be in-person. The question was more so, my child is virtual, but I want them to be in-person. So the building principals have been working with their team and their staff with trying to make those connection to give those students the opportunity to be plugged in with the teacher. So that if it goes with the first option, those parents will have the in-person that they were asking for. The question then becomes how quickly, because I did ask them this, how quickly would they be able to move into that phase? Just like moving into option two or moving into option five? That, that's determined based on the communication that's been, phone calls going out, trying to get the parents to say, hey, you missed this survey. We need to know what it is that your option is. So I wanted to make sure to plug that piece in as a part of the discussion we had with the administrative team.
I had a question about if we were to go with option three and do the five days a week. That would obviously require a lot of staff restructuring. So how would we go about that? Would we offer those virtual positions to teachers that feel like they're more at risk and don't feel comfortable coming back? Or would we offer it to teachers that are rocking it out with technology as virtual teachers? What would that look like?
Yeah. The first option, I'm, I'm glad you asked that, Ms. Jones. The first option is I would take a look at those teachers who are high-risk. And I got to tell you, there's a few of them that have doctors' letters and, and reports that have been sent to my attention to where we would start there. And then we would go to what, because it's most of the kids. And since most of the kids are in-person, then we would be having those teachers with in-person. Now, the same content, just as the teachers talked about early, or teachers, the building principals talked about earlier, that same content with the same rigor is still standards-based. They're still covering with all the kids the same standards in which they need this part of the educational opportunity before, so that they can move forward. The, there's a concern because that's going to be a part of the work with putting teachers, and notice I use the word putting teachers, in places that is going to be of the best fit for the positions to support our kids. And notice I say put in place, meaning that as we did at the beginning of the year in August, that is the right of assignment from the superintendent. And I use an email and I CC the building principals. And then the building principals have the conversation with the teachers. That has not happened yet. That is another one of those questions. That is another one of those questions that the parent asked earlier, well, what's going to take so long? There's a transitional time that has to occur. Teachers who've been doing virtual now have to get ready for in classroom. The reason for teaching that was occurring virtual and then all of a sudden there was virtual in in person for K five and then it was just virtual. They just went straight from what they were already teaching and continued. Well, now that's going to be harder to do if a teacher has been doing just virtual. To now say you're doing in person in virtual, but you're teaching through the Panther portal and you're still utilizing the same methods and technology that moves forward with the students. So it is not back 2019, 2018. It is still a different way of teaching until we are fully back in phase five.
Sure.
I have a kind of a clarification question on that, and this is kind of open to the principals too. So I'm assuming right now the model is we're teaching. We're proposing to teach one way in person and then have dedicated teachers for the virtual learning, doing their own lesson plan, their own model that way. What if we consider something like a remote synchronous learning model to where the cameras are rolling in the classroom? The families that choose to keep their kids at home, they just tune in and they learn right on their Chromebook, just as if they were at their desk versus trying to split our assets.
Yeah, we had that conversation also. And I gotta tell you that there's teachers who are already stressing at the fact that they have to do the kids and still keep them virtual. But as I mentioned to, might have been Jeff, or I talked to all the board members last week, that turning the computer on and standing in front of the computer while it's being delivered is also going to have some, oh, what is it where you're not supposed to see into someone's household. It's called
Is it a FERPA violation?
FERPA violation. I was trying to remember. I got so many HIPAA and FERPA and everything going through my mind. It becomes a legal issue when it comes to the FERPA and what kids and parents are looking at compared to the kids that are in the classroom.
Tim, I would just say I've also had a few families that the reason they enjoy virtual is because the family is working and they want their kids to be able to do their content, their virtual learning, not during the traditional school hours, just because of childcare issue. That would be the only other reason I could, you know, need to be aware of.
But a good question, very good question, sir.
Kevin, if you want to move on with your presentation, please?
Sure. Okay, so that's the K five. I am going to go back to present now. And I'm going to bring up the six twelve. Six twelve. Options. Yep, six twelve options. So the first option, just like it was with the K five, is always what is already occurring right now. So right now it's already virtual only. This option two is the hybrid model, which is the same with the two days and the two days. It can either be a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. It could be a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. It's it's gonna be a discussion as to it's two days that the students are in the building, but it's half the students. So this goes to what Eric was sharing earlier about social distancing. However, I want to add, if you'll notice, I put little social distancing because the secondary kids, excuse me, students, because they're not the little ones. Our secondary students would all be riding the bus together. That's middle school and high school. They would, high school and middle school lunches will be a mixture of students. And the special classes would be a mixture of students. Now, you would know that Eric hadn't talked to me about these options. Had he had talked to me about these options, he would have been talking about the fact that because of busing, because of lunches and because of specials and the students in the building mixing, if a positive case occurs, it will take two to three days to do contact tracing. Give you an example. A parent calls and says that their child is tested positive. Well, we would first find out if the child rides the bus. And then we would hope that there are, well, assigned seating that's on the buses. But then we have to go to each class as to where those classes and what kids are sitting around that student in that class. We'd have to do the same thing with what students are sitting around in the specials class. And then you'd have to have some type of seating assignments even during lunch. Because if not, then there's no way of understanding who that child who, again, symptomatic or was for 48 hours before they tested or was showing that they were symptomatic. That would take out not just the building. It could take out the building and kids from the high school if we're talking about a middle school student. However, if we're talking two days, then it would take the Monday, Tuesday, which some of our neighboring districts call the A group. And then the B group can continue to go to school. Or if the student is in the B group, or should I say the Thursday, Friday group, then Monday, Tuesday can continue going to school. And the same thing for the students that ride the bus and the same thing for specials. That is with little social distancing. Because even in the classes, a parent to say, well, at least I know there's gonna be a little social distancing that's occurring with this model. Because the building is going to divide the students in half. The middle school might be through L and the high school might be through M. Half the students in the building at the middle school, half the students in the building at the high school, which will lower the number of students in the building. However, if I'm teaching art and the middle school, my first hour may have 15 students in it. My second hour may only have five. My third hour may have 10. I may have fourth hour planning. My fifth hour could have up to 20. Because it's split by the number of kids in the building. Because you cannot make the size of each class to be 15 or lower because of the way the buildings being cut in half. You can't say it would take, well, the math class and we'll make sure all those are half. When they switch to go over to the next class, that classes could grow or get smaller. Especially at the high school where there are some ninth graders in geometry. Or there's 11th graders that are taking classes that are advanced classes. So or students who are repeating the class because they need that credit. So I wanted to make sure to share that about the two days. The advantage is half the buildings, half the students are in the building. Teachers are teaching two days in person and three days virtual was not the same or will not be the same like it was in elementary. Because now with this hybrid model, there's two days of teaching in person, one day for the kids who want to be virtual. Because I am the certified math teacher, I'm still responsible for any of the kids whose parents say I want them to be virtual. But I can't teach during the day and do virtual at the same time. Now that's, and I'm gonna go through all of these options and then we're gonna open for some dialogue and some discussion.
Kevin, is this the same discussion you've had with all the board members this week?
That's correct. And and what I'm trying to do, I'm sorry, yeah, Jeff, what I was trying to do was make sure parents who are tuned in also know what it is we're sharing because we've had some parents that have gotten some information and they're going, well, if I knew it was gonna be like that, I don't want my child in this number two option. You're telling me that now my child is getting two days of in-person content specific information. But if I chose to keep my child virtual, only one day out of five, there is an in-person contact for content specific information. So I say that because and option number three is four days in person with little or no social distancing. Because now the number of kids in the class is going to increase over 20. Because you're talking four days that a student is with the same teacher. And then only one day. Parents who want their child to stay virtual, one day a week. Now, I would share with you even as of today, and I'm getting ready to share because those are three options. Today, actually, I'll start last week. I had administrators saying that's just unacceptable. And I told them, I said, it's, I know it is unacceptable. You can't believe or you can't think that we're going to tell a parent your child, because you chose virtual, is only going to get one day of virtual contact specific content.
Okay, that wasn't even in discussion, so I don't even know why we're going there. We've never even discussed the possibility of one day for virtual.
Yes, it was always one day because teachers can't teach virtual students and the students they have during the day. That's why I kept saying it's only one day that they have with virtual students. Because we don't have math teachers, science teachers, social studies. We don't have content specific for those teachers to just teach virtual. However, today, two administrators came back and they asked this question. What if it was three days in person with little or no social distancing? To where now it's two days with the virtual student and three days of in person with the numbers that are going to be above 20. Again, these are proposed ideas. This could be Monday, Wednesday, Friday in person, Tuesday and Thursday for virtual students. The teachers still have the same students still teaching with what you call the Panther portal, the use of the Chromebook. But instead of one day during that week, now there is a discussion in contact specific with content two days a week for virtual students, but it's three days a week for in person. However, every option has a different level of concern, which is why little social distancing is on two. Little or no social distancing is on three. And little or no social distancing on four, which was added because, like I said, two administrators brought this question to me today. Now, I'll come back to this slide, but let's make sure that we open for questions.
I'm gonna, this is Dana. I'm gonna ask the same question I did it. And I know it's I know it's different because they they're changing between classes. And I know that maybe an honors class in eighth grade for ELA will be heavier than, say, regular class for ELA. But on average, for like both middle school and high school, are we looking at 25, 30 class size? And do we know the percentages of parents who still want virtual at those levels?
Yeah. Good evening, President Woltersberger and members of the board. I'll speak to that. So we have 465 students. We have been able to get a survey response from every parent. I want to really emphasize that what parents understand right now is that virtual means what they have been experiencing. And if we go to a hybrid model or four days a week, then virtual students will no longer be able to experience school in the same way because their amount of time and contact time with teachers will drastically decrease. So currently, they're with teachers four days a week. And then there are also three sessions of office hours offered per teacher. And so that's what kids are getting right now. But when we did the survey, 35% of our families are opting to stay virtual. But they're opting to stay virtual based on what they have experienced with virtual education. And with those models that we're talking about, well, any of the models are going to impose a drastic change for our kids' educational experiences for what they're getting if they remain virtual. So I just want to emphasize that piece of things. The 35% is pretty evenly split among grade levels. We have a smaller sixth grade class and a very large eighth grade class, seventh grade situation's right in the middle. If we were to have kids on site, less than 35%, on average, we would have about 15 kids in sixth grade classes, 18 to 20 in seventh grade classes, 20 to 23 in eighth grade classes. I suspect that when parents understand that virtual teaching will look a little bit different than what they're experiencing now, they may change their request. So our current situation for sixth grade, if like if all the kids were in the building, we would have 22 on average, 22 students in sixth grade classes, 27 in seventh grade classes and 29 in eighth grade classes. So those are our current class sizes. Really, when you look at the spread of things, I mean, some of our eighth grade classes have 31, 32 currently in the virtual setting. Just because that's how things pan out with the electives classes. And our electives classes are actually larger, so our band classes, our choir classes, our PE classes, our art class, our computers class, all of those classes have a larger seat allotted, so to speak, but they're larger classes in the schedule currently.
Has anyone reached out to Mr. Bowen or Mr. Driver to discuss with them? I'm sure they are on some type of, both of them, I'm sure, on forums and know like specialize in exactly what we need to do to make choir or band safe for our students. Because I mean, like, there's maybe there's like something that goes over the horn. I know I've seen netting that goes over trombone horns, for example. I'm sure there's a special mask for singing. Has anyone reached out for their their special, their specialties and knowing? Like I said, I'm sure they're on some type of forum.
Well, we've, we talk a lot about return to learn as a staff and weekly, at least at a bare minimum, we talk about returning to learn as a staff. We haven't really made that jump yet because right now we're trying to figure out how to teach kids virtually with band and choir effectively. And boy, they've come together with some really great strategies and made some really amazing progress. But that was a transition in itself. So I have to go from teaching students to use and respect instruments in person to doing this in a virtual setting. That was a big transition. And now we're starting to talk about what does that look like safely with protocols in place. And we're not sure of our protocols and procedures yet because we don't know the number of kids that will be in the building until this vote happens. And so there's such a domino effect that comes after this vote happens for us to identify what we actually need to do to make sure that our kids and our staff. I really want to emphasize too, it's, it is about our kids. And in order for our kids to be safe, our staff has to be safe. We have to take care of our teachers. If we don't take care of our teachers, our students will not be taken care of. And I cannot overstate that enough. I have to keep saying that because yes, it's about our kids and we have to take care of our teachers in order to take care of the kids. It just goes hand in hand. So we've started that conversation, but we haven't really come to any conclusions about things that we might need to order in that.
Stephanie, I'm curious, one of the big issues that was articulated earlier in the, I should say, last year, was the concern over mental health of our students. And part of what I think when we look at the different plans that are laid out here is that is that uh we have a great, a great deal of concern for not only the physical, but the mental health of our students. And so I'm, I'm wondering if, if you or anybody else on staff has got any kind of indication of, of what the degree of, of, of our problem is uh with, with, with our, with our students who are uh going virtual. Um, I, I haven't, I would imagine that probably that thirty, a third of the students who are uh i- i- planning on going virtual are probably the types of students that would do well in either setting and are probably doing fine in terms of mental health. But have you got any kind of an idea about that junior high school uh type of, of uh mental health question?
That's a great question. I appreciate you bringing that up. So we have um done a survey uh with students at the beginning of the year, and then Mrs. Carroll, our school counselor, follows up on that to just identify some of the needs that the kids have from their perspective. Um, and then what we've been doing at the middle school is we have a student support team. All of our schools have a student support team. But what we do is um students are kind of brought up to the student support team. So if there, if there's something that a teacher observes, or maybe that there's something that they're not observing in class, or they're not seeing the kid, they kind of bring them up to our team. And then we, the five of us work through those students and assign them to a caseload. So we each carry a caseload. I carry a caseload, our assistant principal, Mr. Widener carries a caseload and that. And then we have a bunch of different strategies that we use to try to connect with the kids, to check on them. I meet with some kids weekly. I meet with some kids' parents weekly. I mean, it just kind of depends on what they need. Um, but we have used a survey to identify some of their needs, and then our school counselor has based uh her caseload kind of off of what she's getting from the kids' perspectives. Unfortunately, I don't think that captures everything. We are engaging, all of us principals are engaging in a professional learning session that comes with a certification, actually, this week. Um, and it's uh Mr. Devoe can talk a little bit more about that. Um, he'll be more well-versed in exactly what we're doing, but it's ways to identify different indicators of um you know, mental health needs in our kids, especially with having them transition in some respect back to school in person. And then for our students that are still going to remain virtual, how do we continue to interact with them and dive into some of those things and make sure that we can um pinpoint if they are having some issues and what those needs might be?
And, and again, that's going to be when uh we come into February, that's on the agenda to come to the board. When the guidance counselors and Trevor, uh, when Mr. Devoe, when they bring this information as to how we're layering the support for students, even since the beginning, how we've layered more support.
Mm-hmm. And, and at the middle school, our t- our entire teaching staff and school counseling staff has been engaging in a course through Star Commonwealth, Star Global Learning Network, and Star Commonwealth called Trauma Informed um Schools. And so it's learning about trauma-informed care, and you get certified as a trauma-informed practitioner. So um, we're doing that because we, we know that our kids may return to us in some ways, you know, experiencing some things that maybe we can or cannot imagine. Um, and having some different ways of living now and different ways of coping and um, some of those things will be really excellent. Our kids are learning a lot of different resilience strategies and self-management and self-organization that they didn't have before, and some independence that they didn't have before. Not to say that, not to bring any like to the situation, but just to say that they've taken on some new learning that's really important and healthy for them. Um, but we are learning about these things so that we can take better care of them and know how to take better care of ourselves to be there to support our students.
I had a question about the mm-hmm, sorry. I had a question about the um lunch and bus travel. I'm assuming that all of those will involve assigned seating and the kids won't just be free to roam about.
That's, that's the planning part of making sure if it's two, which is half the students, or if it's four with all the students, yes, because bus drivers.
But regardless of how many children are there, I would think during this initial stage when we're still not all vaccinated, that the children at lunchtime and on the bus will have an assigned seat, not be able to just wander around, right?
Yeah, yeah, it just depends on how many. That's what I'm saying. With, once the decision is made, it admits how many they're actually there. So yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. This is Dawn.
Yeah.
Um. Along with what Abby was just kind of touching on, um, we've known that our goal all along has been to get our students and staff back in our buildings. Um, I'm just wondering, what districts have we looked at to make our plan for the return into the buildings as far as there's, you know, there's some high schools that have been in school four to five days a week. So have we reached out to what districts to see how they're making their lunches work and et cetera?
Yes, and we've done from Hastings to Harper Creek to Marshall to um those districts because some are all in, and then there's those with just the two days. And the only difference is when it came to the bus and it came to trying to keep kids in pods, they started and then they're no longer doing that because they know they could not keep up with the contact tracing when it occurs. So there are a number of students that are reporting, has been more of the adults and fewer students that are reporting that they are uh positive. So we've looked at those schools, and that is what I'm presenting here today is why I'm saying there's a two, and then there's a four, and then there's a three. Because uh I, I use Lakeview as an example. They have a um outside uh virtual academy because they have an alternative school that is gonna connect with all of their students who want to be virtual. Well, we don't have an alternative school. So we're not able to use the online program like some of the other schools that have alternative schools to say that's where they're going to get their alternative uh, their virtual learning. We have to create an opportunity for our virtual learning students whose parents want them to be virtual.
Sorry, I have a question on that. Um, are you referring to just like the lower levels? Because I mean, we've got E twenty-twenty for high school levels and if, if, I mean, my, my daughter took an E twenty-twenty class her freshman year because nothing would fit in that slot second semester. So I mean, I'm just curious, what do you mean, we don't have anything virtual? I mean, does that not count?
No, I'm saying we can use E twenty-twenty. We could also, we're looking at what could be the virtual learning, not virtual, um K twelve virtual, to where you can actually pay for the class that the kid is taking, right? However, the other districts are running those programs through their alternative program, which means their teachers are connecting there. Well, we don't have the alternative, so we don't have the extra teachers that are going to do just the virtual students. That's why it's such a uh a conundrum to say one day a week because the students are still gonna have the same teachers virtually. It is when does that virtual teacher actually get a chance to connect with them? Uh, another, another option that hasn't even been shared with teachers or um to even see if this is an option, is uh, I think Jeff had mentioned this when, what about their, during their planning? There may be some teachers that offer their planning time to connect with virtual students. Or we don't mess with their planning time, as Jeff and I talked about. But maybe there's two hours in the afternoon, like the administrators brought up today, to where there's content-specific teachers that we pay to help with the virtual students. So that would be a teacher that says, I've got everything working with my in-person students, yet I'm taking time after between four and six o'clock. You're paying me for a couple hours to help with math or English or social studies because they need to have more than that one day of contact with those students who are virtual, whose parents are asking them to be virtual. Just, just some more ideas that are being uh put out there on the table to think about.
Thank you. Tom Faber, welcome, sir.
Evening, and congratulations, new board members, welcome. Uh, just, just a little bit of our, our numbers at the high school. So we've gotten response from four hundred and forty-one uh students represented on the survey out of six hundred and eighty-eight. We got a little, just under two hundred and fifty yet. We're still contacting. I know we've made some contact today, but I haven't, I don't have those numbers yet. Um, but, so we're chipping away at it. But, so out of the four hundred and forty-one that we received information back from the survey, we had a hundred and twenty-five requesting to remain virtual. Um, it's roughly twenty-eight percent. Um, you know, with the additional two hundred and forty-seven or so that need to be contacted, you know, that, that twenty-eight percent could rise or fall, you know, a few points, one way or the other. Um, what that means, you know, it kind of as Mr. Simmons is gonna explain, if, if we were in a hybrid setting and separating, say, you know, half and half, we could, some classrooms would be socially distant that, hey, because our class averages, averages is a bad way to look at it in the high school building because of the uh, the number of classes and the discrepancies. I'd say we have classes maybe as low as, say, sixteen up to as thir- maybe as thirty-two or thirty-three. Um, more of them are gonna fall in the range of twenty-five, twenty-six. But we do have some that go, you know, some that go up to thirty-one, thirty-two. We'll have some that are, some of the advanced classes that maybe have a smaller population in there. So a student, if we are in a hybrid setting where half the kids are coming in the building, you know, two days a week, or, or, or they, something of that nature, we could uh, some of the classrooms would be able to practice social distancing, some would not because of the number of kids there. So um, that's a uh, you know, something to be aware of as far as making that transition. Uh, if it was all in, as Mr. Simmons said, the social distancing would kind of be out the door because with, you know, even with a hundred and twi- twenty-five, let's say it was even two hundred kids, that's still four hundred and eighty-eight, just under five hundred kids in the building, we're not going to be able consistently social distance um in the building. So um, that's as far as our numbers and what it, what it looks like for us.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Anything for Tom?
Actually, I, I do have a question for you, Tom, and this goes back to the uh item I had mentioned to Courtney. Uh, and, and for that matter, to Stephanie. Um, the ideas of uh focus on uh, and I know that Kevin said we're gonna talk about this next month, but this really isn't significant in terms of making a decision tonight about success in the classroom as well as mental health success. So can you share with us tonight some of the items that you think um make it possible for virtual to continue, or do you think it would be better for us to go back into the, into the classroom with our students?
Well, there's, there's multiple things considered. You, you know, educationally, um, you know, if you look at Maslow's hierarchy, ki- people have to feel safe and secure first and foremost. And so those kids that are gonna feel safe and secure coming back in the building to learn, or if families feel comfortable with their students doing that, they would do that. Those that do not, they're going to remain in the virtual setting, so they've got that need taken care of first. Because if that needs, as you know, if that needs not taken care of, they're not gonna be ready for the, making the next step of, you know, okay, I wanna engage in learning and, and bettering myself and getting an education. So um best option, you say, overall, what do we need to do? Um, we've got a lot of kids, we need the not, it's not always the best thing for everyone, meaning we're not gonna necessarily make one decision that's gonna be perfect for everyone in this scenario. What we've gotta do is try to make the best to, as my job and all of our administrators' job is to make sure we provide an equality education for all of our kids. Whether, and, and in some ways, it may be sacrificing a little bit so that everyone's got some good opportunity as opposed to, well, we wanna go this route and support these kids. Uh, we need to support all our kids. It's just gonna look different, some in the virtual setting, some maybe face-to-face.
So, so let me, let me add this um, this thought. Again, this is a conversation that has occurred with the administrators and I am pretty sure, I didn't share this with members of the board when I was talking to them last week. It is still possible to do a phase-in opportunity for the students to where there is a um, and I'll say, I'm just gonna go backwards real quick, the K five, those parents who want their kids to have in-person can still get into in-person and still stay with the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The classes would get a little larger, but it would still be something that the teachers could work with, with keeping the numbers down. There's, could be a phase in also with six twelve. Because if it's two days a week, then that's the start until we start getting into teachers getting vaccinations and and the uh numbers, as Eric said, we really want them to be down below three. And then maybe coming back in another month and saying, well, can we go from two days a week to now maybe three days a week? So there is a phasing in that could occur at uh five, at K five, in at six twelve. Just another thought to uh put in to um, to the thought of phasing in and still having the opportunity open uh going into next month. As you, as you ponder the decision.
You got a couple more slides for us, Kevin?
Oh, yes, I do. Just wanted to make sure we're okay there. Let's get to these last slides. I am going to share the screen again. And I said the last two slides should be more like additional information and questions, opportunity for questions. That's the six twelve that we just talked about, those uh what was three, which is now four uh opportunities and questions. These are, this is the additional information that I mentioned, the parent uh guardian's teacher request. Earlier, I mentioned the fact that there's parents who are thinking the same, well, as Stephanie had mentioned, Ms. Bruce, the same quality of virtual teaching that parents would wanna keep those same teachers and they chose virtual, but now all of a sudden find out that has changed. Then they may change their mind and go, oh, well, no, if that's the case, I, I think I want my child in person. That's some of the work that is gonna take time with the phone calls and making sure students are in place and teachers are in place. Parent guardians may wanna change their minds, which is uh, I just uh laid into. Informing teachers of their assignments. Notice it is informing them based on what Ms. Jones had said earlier, how you go about doing that. Well, it's going to be a superintendent right of assignment, just as we did back in August. But they need to prepare for the shift because there's gonna be a shift that's occurring regardless if they're doing just virtual, would may have new students. Or if, and I'm talking elementary, or if it's a teacher who's now doing two days with in-person and they're still responsible for virtual if we're talking about our uh secondary. Transportation, there's a, a piece of information that we haven't uh spoken much about because at this point, there's probably a number of parents saying, I'll take my child until you finally get him on the bus. But right now, I want my child to be in person, so let's get him there. So that's why there hasn't been much conversation about uh the transportation. However, our new director has been working with Shar, our past director, in making sure those routes are there. And they're looking at making sure we have that prepared for our students. And then that's where it just ends with that la- that's the last slide with questions and thoughts. So that is.
Mr. Simmons, can I just add, um, when we're talking about that transition to in-person learning from where we are now, that there's also, also a very large domino effect that comes into play. When we find out what the structure looks like, then we work the numbers. Then we have a lot of planning, like our teachers really need to take time to be able to plan to effectively carry this out. So I just wanna stress that um, the importance of being able to do this the right way and not to jump into something too quickly. I terribly want children in the building. I will say that. Um, I think all of our principals, all of our educators feel that way. We're all in agreement with that. We want our Um, I think all of our principals, all of our educators feel that way, we're all in agreement with that, we want our kids in the building. We want to be able to do it safely and we want to be able to do it the right way. And so it's really important that we tie these pieces up the way that we need to. And we can't do a lot of that until we have an answer about where we're going next.
And it, and if I could just add, not only do they need the time, I'm sorry, Stephanie, did you mute and you're still talking?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, okay. So, so they also need to do that work at the same time, still doing the virtual teaching and the work that they're supposed to be doing. So they have to do both. We can't just say, we're not going to teach anymore, go get ready for what's next, they have to be able to do both. Very good point. So, uh.
So I'll be the one to ask the last question, apparently. Um, in speaking this week, you reassured that uh whatever the possibility of in-person with virtual option for K through five. You stated that we have enough staff to provide to the approximately twenty-five to thirty percent of virtual students.
That's correct.
Direct, so yes, your schedule may change, you may have, this is Smith, but now you're on virtual, okay. So we have staff for that. You also stated six through twelve at whatever type of in-person learning is a choice. Um, without going to five days, you stated that we have enough staff to support the virtual throughout the week, correct?
No, we have enough to do because they have to be able to do four days or three days with in-person. And the same teachers have to do for one day for virtual or two days for virtual.
Jeff, are you talking about K-five?
I'm talking six through twelve.
Six, sorry.
Well, yeah, he's talking six-twelve.
And just. I, I have one more thing, too, I, I want to make sure, like, so, I mean, we've got all these percentages and thirty-five percent of middle school and we'll say twenty-eight percent of high school. But what if after we vote tonight, you get twenty calls tomorrow and somebody said they wanted virtual, now they want to switch? Um, we, a couple, just a couple of quick things. A, what's our cutoff? B, how many times are you letting these people change? Um, is it once a marking period? What, what is it that we're going to do and how are we going to, and I mean, we need to, everything needs a little, like a time, I mean, like.
Dana.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that, that's a very good point and a very good, um, and that comes with the actual decision that's being made. Because once the decision is made, then comes the timeline. Because you're right, we'll most likely have some parents to say, oh, no, 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 I don't want the virtual now. Because that's something different than what I was envisioning based on what was virtual. Now I want my child to be in person. That's some of that going to take time to try to get them scheduled with their teachers just right.
And if, if I can add to Dana, kind of with what you're saying, some of the problem, at least at the K-two level, is that parents are wanting, some parents want a hybrid option. So they're kind of going to have to decide between the, you know, more days or less days if that's not an option. So I think some just weren't sure.
Yeah.
I've got one question, uh, regarding the, uh, the FERPA violation for the uh synchronous learning.
Yeah.
Can you explain to me what that violation would be?
And what the difference between video and in-class is any different than a teacher videoing in their living room and twenty-five students in their beds?
Yeah, because when I, when I look over Connor's shoulder, I can see in everybody's house.
Right, right. So this is my understanding, and I can get clarification from our legal counsel. But this is what my understanding is based on what I've heard from other superintendents who have brought up the same question. Is that if something occurs in your household uh behind you and then that's because that's you and your household and the teacher that is teaching that. Meaning the teacher is talking through the screen and you're at home. But when you turn it around and I'm talking to you and now I'm in the classroom. If a student is in the picture or makes a comment or says something, that's the violation. That's what's different. Now, that's the way I understand it. Unless.
It, it would seem to me that when that camera's on and you're in a public setting, your right to privacy is waived by your own volition. So that, that would be a definite question for legal.
And no offense, but I don't see a problem in eliminating that right out of the picture and saying that you don't have to have your video. None of the kids, half the kids, don't have their video on right now anyhow.
So you're talking that even if the video's not on, the teachers are talking about the lesson while the kids are actually at home virtually, listening to what's going on.
Yeah, correct, it, it's like they're, uh, they're, they're synchronized with the classroom, they're just on their Chromebook at home.
Can I jump in for a second, Kevin? This is Tammy.
Tammy, yes.
Um, when it comes to synchronous learning, there's, there's a lot of factors there. One factor is equipment. Uh, we don't have the type of equipment that you would need in a classroom to do that kind of broadcasting. Um, just taking a laptop and turning it around and pointing it at the front is not going to do a very good job. The teacher would have to stay right in front of that camera and couldn't move. So what you're doing is you're tying their hands from walking around the room, making connections with kids. Because they've got to sit right in front of that camera for the kids that are watching. Um, I have a lot of friends that are teaching and, and some of them are, are doing synchronous. And it has been a nightmare for them because they're two very different kinds of, of teaching. When you're trying to just say, hey, okay, here, sit at this computer and watch what's going on in a classroom. Um, there's so much more that happens in a classroom than what they're going to see there. And, and they're not going to be able to partake in that the same way. Um, it is really uh not a good choice to do synchronous.
So if we could, let's go back, um, I am the one that, that started this topic, so I'm going to go back to how I originally said it. Um, what I am asking is for staff to continue teaching basically virtual just like they are right now, except for they're going to be in the front of their classroom. We don't want them walking around. Obviously, it's going to happen, but we want the teachers to stay safe, we want the teachers to stay in the front of the classroom. Keep your camera rolling, just as it's going right now, we're talking mainly six through twelve. Keep your camera rolling. So you are going to continue to church, teach, ex- uh, uh, essentially virtual, just like you are right now. Except for the fact you're going to have approximately seventy-five percent, I see you, Jerry, I'll get to you. Approximately seventy-five percent on average of children in your, students in your class, and you're going to have approximately twenty-five percent of students virtual. You're going to teach your, your class lesson, we're asking you to teach your class lesson. Right now, I, I, I got to admit, our, our lessons are going for an average of twenty to thirty minutes. That leaves time at the end of the period to address uh any questions whatsoever. Um, with continuing this model the way that we're doing it right now, except for we're going to have some in class and, and the teacher's going to be in front of the class. Not, and I've said it a million times, not if, but when someone gets quarantined. They've been in close contact, whatever. That teacher now goes home, now they're teaching, just like they are right now, six through twelve, they're teaching at home. Class never stops. We don't have, we don't have to, we don't have to shut down class. That teacher's going to keep right on teaching. If a student, one, two, five, ten students from her classroom now get quarantined, now they're at home. They're going to log right on, they're still going to do their whip report, they're still going to do everything, like they're teaching virtual. Except for now, we're asking them to do it in the front of the classroom, in front of seventy-five percent of the students, while twenty-five are online.
You know what, Jeff? You did say it just like that. And I did say I was going to bring it back to the administrators. Because what you said was right around what I haven't been saying. So you did say it that way. So the question is, so, um, you, what, what you brought was a very good question. Would you, the way I understood it, was why can't the teachers continue to teach virtual even when the kids are in the class?
So I'm going to call it. Yes, exactly. Jerry, I see your hand.
Yeah, yep.
So, um, I'm sorry. I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, Jeff, using our norms here, but I'm also going to throw a, a, a pedagogical response out. Um, I had to use that word twice today, so I've got one more time, I got to use that word, but.
Okay.
The, the, the first part is exactly what you and Kevin were just talking about. You took the words out of my mouth, that we, we do want the experts in deciding pedagogy to consider that at a moment's notice, we could have some type of contact tracing and we have to shut down your class, your grade level, your bus, et cetera, whatever it is. So we have to have in place a method in order for that virtual learning to pick right up. But I think our teachers are experts in that. I think that's who we get around the table. Once we decide what it is and the structure of the day, let's pull them in and we can run with the ball, that's what we do. But the other part is, the difference between being that virtual teacher, where you're in your living room or you're in the classroom and one hundred percent of your kids are out there, is you don't have the social distractions that you have to deal with when there's twenty high school kids. Or we're, I'll even go to middle school and Stephanie will laugh at this, but poking at each other, pulling hair, calling me a name. You know, just the stuff that kids do that require proximity or corrections that, that a limited movement of the teacher isn't going to be real. Now, I was, I was the band director, I was Blake Driver in my previous life. I will tell you that band rooms are disgusting. There is stuff laying around like you wouldn't believe, but, which could lead to, you know, some type of a, um, exposure. But they're also very conscious of hygiene because they teach the kids this stuff with their horns. I, I do think that's doable. But when it comes to expecting a teacher to teach a certain way, let's get them around the table. They're the experts, we can tell them, this is going to be your structure, you're going to have both types of kids in your room. How can we do this? Principals can facilitate that and we can get that done.
So, so Jeff.
I apologize, Jerry, I thought that was a question that was asked Friday in the meeting.
I, what's that? Jeff, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That was a question that I had for Kevin that was, that was supposed to be brought up last week on asking the, the staff on how they feel. Um, how, how staff six through twelve feel about that continuing, what, exactly what I just said, continuing doing what they're.
Yeah.
Now they're just taking their Chromebook to, to work, to school and right on going.
Well, perfect.
Yeah, can I, can I follow up on what you're saying, Jerry? Um, because you're exactly right.
Tendron.
The problem is now that, um, you're going to, you have two forms of kids, you have virtual and in-person. So there is an interaction that happens in a classroom. I mean, kids interact with kids, teachers interact with, with, um, the kids and so on. So you ha- you're going to have to somehow be able to take a virtual kid and interact with an in-person kid. The only way, you, you, the only way to do that is to stick all of your virtual kids up on a screen and even then, they're just watching them. Um, the mixture becomes a nightmare for trying to teach and to try and do your lessons the way they're intended. When I'm at home and they're all on the screen, we're all in the same boat. But mixing it, it's kind of like when we do our board meetings and some of you were in-person and some of you were virtual. It was really difficult to, to have both mediums at the same time. So along with what Jerry's saying and the other ones are saying, that mixture is, is very difficult to pull off.
So if we continue doing exactly what we're doing right now, virtual, except for in the front of the class, the only thing that you're stating um, more that the teacher would have is behavioral issues of, of students in class. Is that what you're?
No, behavior is definitely one thing, but that's not all I'm saying. I'm saying that as a teacher, um, learning is not just a teacher standing up front and talking to the kids, it's not just teacher-centered. It has to be student-centered as well, and there's student interaction with each other, there's group learning, there's small group, large group, individual work. And when you try to mix that both virtually and in-person, that is a very difficult classroom to maintain and to pull off what you're trying to teach. That's what, so I'm not, it is behavioral and it is, Jerry, pedagogical.
Pedagogical. So, so Jeff, you and Tim, that question was one that I took to the administrative staff. Not to teachers, but that would be a question that would need to come from teachers as, some are going to say, I got it, I can do that. I, uh, some are going to say they can do that. It's the majority of if we say that's what we want to go in that direction. What type of training, which I, I think again, this is, oh, what do you call it? Um, trial and error that occurs with teachers, and I say that with some that had to do the same thing with learning how to do virtual um teaching. That there will be some that will cringe at, oh, my gosh, now you're getting ready to ask me to do something else that's different. Give me some time to learn how to do it. Maybe this is a phase-in.
Well, like you said, it's, you know, with the learning curve, but there is, and I don't know where we're at with our CARES dollars, but there is technology out there to help with the, the synchronous learning. Uh, I know there's the owl, I've heard that's pretty laggy, I know there's another system that follows the lapel pin. So it can kind of bridge that gap to being just a fixed fixture in front of the, in front of the laptop and just trying to teach. Where it would create some of that freedom of movement, some of that, um, some of that more in-person feel, even though you're not in person.
Yes, and what?
Yeah, you're, you're right, there are those tools, um, we've used a few of them in the past. Right now, though, in order to get a class up and running in the timeframe we're looking at, there's no way we'd get that tech in, in, in time for the classes. Um, we're still waiting on our Chromebooks that we ordered July first. I just sent an email today that, uh, they're being shipped from China today. So we've got about four weeks and we'll see those, so you, you can't even buy the stuff right now and get it in in a timely manner.
Well, it could be something we could check into if that's what it comes down to, so.
I just want to put it in two cents of, from a teacher's perspective on that. Um, learning is so much about student engagement. And I don't believe that you can fully engage students in front of you in a class and students online. Teachers are going to feel torn. Um, and I think it's like this stereotype created by TV and stuff that teachers stand at the front of the room and teach, that's not what teachers do. Even with social distancing, they're going to move around to want to engage kids. And they're not going to feel like they can give a hundred percent to kids in a classroom and a hundred percent to kids online, and that's not fair to kids.
Thank you, sir.
If I could just add, um, thank you for that, Ms. Jones, and I would like to add that I, I really feel that asking our teachers to teach virtual and onsite students simultaneously will greatly compromise their ability to effectively teach our kids. And I, that is a very concerning thought for me that we would put that on our teachers, and I feel that it will compromise their professional ability to be the great teachers that they are.
Fair enough, is there any data, any resource we can go to to find out?
I believe Ms. McGinnity was speaking to some of those things, and I know she has an abundance of information that could support that. And those are the kinds of things that she's talking about. Um, she's the expert in this field. Um, and so I would let her, you know, I would, I would work with her on getting some of that information.
I could always put it on a list serve with the superintendents across the state. And pretty much what they do is, is like a survey question. Hey, um, before I continue, Jeff, did you see Dawn had her hand raised?
Yes, go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, sorry about that.
I really appreciate everyone's input. And as I mentioned before, our goal is to return our staff and students safely. Part of that may be that it is new and different times, and yes, it's great to want to engage and walk around. Unfortunately, right now, for social distancing purposes, that's just going to be very limited. I think it is very important with what Kevin just said, to reach across the state and find out what high schools and middle schools are doing this and have been doing this since the beginning of the year. And consider that, I would have hoped that some of that would have taken place before now, with the goal to be all back in person. And knowing we will still always have to offer a virtual format as well. So, I just. So I just would like us to start focusing on how can we make it work instead of why it's not going to work? I feel like we're spending a lot of time on why it's not going to be able to work like that.
Well, let me, let me just clarify. All of the elements that have been discussed, the only one that has a different element to the table is what Jeff has mentioned and Tim has followed up on is can teachers, how successful can they be with standing at the computer and teaching virtually while the students are there in the classroom in front of you? That is something that has not been looked at because that's the first time this has come to that question in that manner.
That was brought up to you Tuesday, Kevin. Um.
Yeah, we were talking about administrators when we were talking. I didn't realize you wanted me to question all the teachers about that, that piece. That was the administrator.
Specific question you were asking your administrators in the Friday morning meeting. You were going to ask them, how many of our staff members would be willing to do that to make this transition go a little bit easier? Plus the quarantine process would go a lot smoother with essentially quote unquote, we called it, leaving the camera rolling.
Yep, that's correct.
Tom, I'm gonna ask your two cents on that from the, from the high school perspective.
From my perspective, you want my personal opinion? I believe that would be very challenging to keep, kind of, I'll echo what Sarah Jones had said, that keep the, the virtual students engaged in when I've got the computer in front of me, I've got 15 kids in front of me, I've, whatever we're actually, we're doing, whatever I'm trying to convey and I'm trying to engage them in, I'm probably, I'm in nature, I'm gonna be more engaged with, with the bodies here in front of me. And then every once in a while, oh yeah, I gotta look back at the computer. Where are they at? And who, oh, you know what? Uh, and I think it's gonna be sadly that much more likely that those kids tune out because I'm, I'm not really engaged. I mean, I am, but I'm not. And, you know, I'll say on the staff end of transition from one to another, to another, um, that, yes, it's another learning curve. I know, we spoke to that already. I think that's a tremendous learning curve, um, to execute again. And we're gambling with the level of success and education we're providing to our students in the virtual setting. Um, you know, so that I, that's where I would, I think it would be a challenge to make it one that's engaging for the virtual students in that setting because I'm trying to divide my attention. Um, I'm looking at the, my bodies there in front of me, I'm looking at, and, you know, every once in a while, take a peek at the screen. Where are we at there?
Thanks, Tom. I, I'm just trying to come up with some options to make all this, I don't know, options to try to make all this run smooth. Um, we're not.
Yep.
We have ideas on now, on, on how not to make any of this work. So now we're trying to find ways to make this work. Um, exactly what, what Dawn was just stating. Yep. If nobody has any more questions at this time, I would look.
You got your hands up, Jeff. You got your hands up.
I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to, um, just, I have a student perspective on the, and the teacher in front of the, having both virtual and in-person. Um, so the, the personal experience that I, the student had, she was a ninth grader. And she was in-person while the teacher was trying to teach both virtual and students in the classroom. And it was very difficult for the student in the classroom to learn. It wasn't a good learning experience for her because they weren't, um, they weren't allowed to ask questions or interact with the teacher during the lesson because the teacher had to try and do, was trying to do something for the virtual students. So I don't know exactly that situation, but, um, just a, another aside, it was also difficult for the student that was in the classroom. That was all I wanted to put in there.
And I could understand the feedback. I appreciate the feedback first and foremost from everybody. Um, I just, I, I'm still trying to grasp what the difference, uh, uh, with everybody still being essentially virtual. Um, except for you're gonna have 75%, approximately 75% in, in the class. The camera's still gonna be rolling. Everything is gonna be just like Sam sitting at the kitchen table, but now he's sitting at his desk in class. Um, I would like to, to, you know, touch on that, um, after this. Um, you know, maybe there's, there's something that, that we could start with there and, and kind of roll with there. Um, at this time, I would like to read the, uh.
You got two more hands raised, Jeff.
I don't see a single hand. Dawn.
Yeah, Dawn and Sarah.
Okay, this is Dawn again. Um, I want us as a board to remember that we are the what and they are the how. So if the board decides on a four-day, one virtual, four-day, and whatever, whatever option we choose to decide on, or maybe different than the options offered, we just ask the administration, tell them this is what we would like. And then they will have to find a way to make it work. So all things aside, that is what we have to remember. We need to stop. Um, it's like we have a lack of confidence in our students' behavior and our teachers' ability when they will make this work. We had these doubts with all virtual in the beginning. They have made adjustments all along the way to make it work as much, to the best that they could. Let's put it that way. If we bring our students and staff back in whichever option is decided tonight, I have full confidence that our students, parents, staff and administration will work it out and tweak it along the way to be the best district for our community.
Well said, Dawn. Thank you. Sarah, you had your hand up?
It was from earlier. I'm good.
I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. At this point, I would like to read the, uh, results of the survey that was just conducted. Um, as touched on here and there throughout this meeting, uh, we had approximately 75% uh, completion. We are still looking for about 500, well, excuse me. At the completion of this survey, there was approximately 500, uh, uh, families, students that did not complete this survey. Uh, hence, all of our great building administrators have, uh, spoke on that throughout the meeting on touching base with those 500 said students to get their answer on whether they would like to be virtual or, uh, some sort of in-person. Um, with the question of would my student, uh, return as virtual only, no matter what the Board of Education decide? Uh, 72.2% of our community said no. Um, again, that's about 1,500 replies. Uh, 72.2% said no, they would not choose to return virtual. Um, out of the 1,069 that replied with no to virtual, 91.2 said that they would choose the hybrid for, format. 92.9% said that they would choose the four-day-a-week option. Um, and I think there was a little bit of, we didn't, parents didn't know what they were necessarily choosing without our decision tonight. Uh, but I think that's pretty apparent on, uh, 73% of our community that, that filled out the survey, um, has spoke once again. Um, along with that was a, uh, question on whether you could provide transportation. Some talk about transportation was, was asked about, brought up tonight. Um, out of everybody that, that filled out the survey already, um, 53% of our community is willing to provide transportation. So that's 50% of our students that are willing to come in-person will actually be riding our buses. Yes, we will still be in contact. Yes, all that stuff applies. But that drastically reduces the number that I think is a little bit misconstrued. Um, so, I mean, out of this survey, approximately 400 students would be riding the bus. Again, we have separate busing times for K through five versus six through 12. So that's gonna reduce that quite a bit. Um, uh, you know, so there's, there's some positive numbers right there. There, there's some numbers, uh, results from the survey. Um, along with it, uh, we did have 75% of our community say we're not having troubles with our internet connection, which is awesome. Um, we've done a lot of hotspots. We've done a lot of, of stuff to help our, uh, parents get internet. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, we do still have 13% that say they do not have accessibility at all to internet. We still have 10% that's saying that they do not have good internet. Uh, the remaining 10% are having issues with their internet. So I just wanted to read the results from the, uh, most recent survey just before, uh, Christmas break ending, uh, January 3rd.
Jeff, do we have any specific information about what the, uh, was there any qualitative data that, uh, followed that? Uh, any of those questions, uh, any of the answers that went with those questions? So specifically, so specifically was it, uh, did we have an A, B and C reasons why they wanted to go, uh, return to school? For instance, the children to return to, uh, school, uh, full-time? Or is, is this just a, a yes or no?
This was a yes or no. Um, this was the questions in format, um, put together by, uh, the superintendent and staff. Um, that was the questions that they chose and the format that they chose to send out to our, um, parents. So there's no, there's no additional information, um, you know, beyond the, the yes or no, uh, for each, each of those, uh, uh, four questions. Um, 100% hybrid or 100% virtual, hybrid, uh, uh, four days a week, and then they, uh, providing transportation.
Thank you.
Jeff, um, and this was something I meant to ask Kevin and forgot, apologize. Um, were you able to tell that by age range? Like, was there a big variation in those percentages for the K-5 or 612? Or was that not data that you collected?
So I would ask, uh, Jackie, if you would.
It was, it was by grade levels. So it is by age within those groups. So it says which buildings that they were actually in.
I spoke with Jackie earlier in the week and she has compiled this, this data in an awesome way. She could about tell you, uh, everything. She could tell you who filled out the survey multiple times, um, et cetera, et cetera. She's done a great job with it. I think she could, she could answer any of those questions if, if you need, uh, uh, more of an answer than that, Abby.
It was just kind of a general question is was there a very, a large variation in percentage between who wanted to be, uh, 100% virtual between the younger kids and the older kids? That was really what I was wondering.
Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was pretty much even across the buildings or was that?
Yeah, surprisingly enough, it was pretty even through all the buildings. And that's what the principals were talking about, their percentages of how many they want to remain virtual. That's pretty close to, from the survey.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So then obviously addition to those numbers, um, administration of each building has, has tried to reach out. Uh, Jackie has provided each building with a, uh, incomplete survey list for their building. Um, they've been going out, uh, this week, uh, trying to make those phone calls, trying to make those contacts in any way possible. Um, so hence, the percentages that the administration provided versus, uh, what's on there is their building specific. And they've got more of that 500, uh, uh, students that didn't complete the survey. Um, now we have, we have information from, sounds like most of them. If not, maybe, maybe 10 to 12% left. It sounds like pretty much across the buildings that, that we still need to get a hold of. Any other questions? Board of Education. I asked, I asked you tonight, um, no school board member, uh, across this land signed up for a job in, in questions and answers and, and, uh, uh, stuff that school boards across the nation has had, have had to do this year. Um, this is a very difficult decision. Where does risk outweigh reward? Um, you have heard the numbers tonight. You have heard the numbers over the last few weeks. Um, as far as failure rate, as far as, uh, not attending meetings. Um, the social aspect of this, um, I've got, I, I've done research after research. Um, the suicide rate in the state of Michigan right now is absolutely insane. Um, so furthermore, I would like to propose, starting January 25th, 2021, K-5 remove, re- resume, resume to school five days a week. I would ask.
I would like to, I'd like to make a point of order. Uh, Jeff, I don't believe you as, uh, as President of the Board is allowed to, uh, make a proposal. It's left to the, a member of the, uh, rest of the board to make a proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's fine. President is a member of the school board too and, okay.
I think we've always, um, so I, I think that the way that I was taught was that the other members of the board made the motion, but, um, I would, I would agree with Cap, with Craig, but that doesn't mean that you can, you can't propose what you would like the motion to be, Jeff, that you couldn't go ahead and suggest that and just ask if you can get a motion for it.
That's fine.
I would, I would keep going, but then just see, see if anyone will make a motion.
So I would ask for motion. Uh, K through five, return five days, Monday through Friday, resuming January 25th. I would ask that six through 12, resume, resume four days a week, Monday through Thursday, leaving Friday as office hours, also resuming January 25th. K through 12 will have a virtual option.
I would be willing to make a motion for K-5, um, five days a week and then deal with, deal with each of this different grade levels in two different motions.
Anyone else oppose that?
No, I'm, I'll second that, Abby.
So the motion on the table is K-5, five days a week, resuming January 25th with a virtual option. Is there any discussion?
Out of, uh, out of concern for, uh, the health of, uh, staff as well as, uh, the issues surrounding administration, I would suggest that we, uh, remain with the, uh, uh, program that we have right now. So as a result of that, I would, I would say, suggest that, that, uh, five days a week is, uh, is something that would be, uh, not, not in the best interest of the students, the faculty or the administration.
Is that a motion, Craig?
I think we have to deal with a motion on the floor first. I think he was just discussing.
Yes.
Um, the only thing I have to add with this is, is kind of what I just touched. Um, K through five, uh, from a personal note, um, virtual, I, we're losing a lot here. Um, it, it's apparent in the, in the data, um, everything, uh, K through five is very low at risk. Yes, we are still thinking about our, our teachers. Um, those are, you know, our amazing staff is gonna have to do their due diligence and continuing to wear their masks along with students. Um, and do what we need to do to take a step forward. Stop looking at other school districts. Stop looking at other school districts and, and make Penfield one and let's, let's get the ball rolling and, and, and get this going.
I, can I interject a little bit too, just to su- support the motion a little bit more? If this is discussion is when, uh, Eric, I, I can't remember exactly how to pronounce his last name, spoke. He had mentioned about 18 students in a classroom is, is still very safe and you can still social distance. And based on the percentage of the, um, the parents that filled out the survey as of, uh, as of now, um, each of the buildings would be hitting right around that number, um, based on 28% at North Penn coming back. Um, I'm going to say, we'll say 12 at Purdy and then Dunlap, just based on the, the numbers that Dunlap has seen so far of virtual. I think we'll still be right in that sweet spot, um, based on the class sizes and the number of people that, um, will probably stay virtual. I, I think that we'll still stay within that number that, that, uh, Eric told us to shoot for.
I just want to question with this option, if that timeline is going to be realistic? The 25th is just a couple of weeks away. And since this option, um, requires major restructuring of staff, is that going to be realistic, um, by the 25th?
So Sarah, Sarah, you would have an option to, um, amend the motion if you wanted to?
So I would amend it to, um, pending, uh, the restructuring of the staff. I would not put a date on it. I would leave that to the superintendent and administrators to decide when that would be actually realistic. Um, and possibly extend that.
So then somebody would have to support her motion to amend.
I would, I would support that effort to amend.
I, uh, I'm not sure how to do it. I, I kind of, kind of what Sarah's saying, I'd like to go a different way about it. I like having the deadline and then for some reason, if the deadline can't be made, then we could evaluate at that point, but that way this isn't just an open end, never going to happen. We, we have a set time and if it can't be made, we could come together and say, okay, that, here's the reason why. And then we could extend then, once we had that information.
And at the same point in time, I just want to touch on the email that was provided to all of us on Friday stating that the 25th is an agreed upon date, um, for all actions. So that has been agreed on that, um, everything can be put in place by the 25th.
So Jeff, just, just from a point of order, you need to vote on the amend, amendment and get people to get yes or no's if people want to amend the original motion and then you need to vote on the motion.
Okay, so voting on the amendment first.
Which is to leave the, leave the date open ended. That's what you're voting on.
Correct. Sarah, would you like to take a vote?
Okay, sure, um, Dawn?
No.
Tim?
No.
Craig?
Hi.
Dana?
No.
Sarah, I would vote yes. Jeff?
No.
Abby?
No.
Okay.
So that means the motion sta- stands as it was originally. So I think that you go ahead and vote on it unless people have more discussion.
I just have one quick question. Per this survey, Jeff, did you, did you tell us that, um, 92.9% of people that responded to the survey said they wanted to go back in person? Did I write that down right? Did I hear it right?
Seventy, seventy-two said no, they do not choose to return 100% virtual.
Virtual, all right, how many said they wanted to go back in person?
That.
That's the other, is the other.
Question asked. I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to request word for word here, Tim. The question asked is would your student return to a 100% virtual setting? 72% said no. So all that 72% of total completed surveys, 1,069 were able to move on to the next question. If you, if you answered yes to the first question, you never even saw the second question. So now 1,069 moved on to the second question, which was, would you, uh, would you opt for a, uh, two day in-person, three day virtual? Would you send your students to school? Of that 1,069, 91.2% said yes. That same 1,069 moved on to, would you send your student to school if it was a four day a week option? And the same 92.9, actually more chose the four day option.
Okay, so the, so the information that we do have, the trend is going toward they prefer in-person.
73% said that they would not choose 100% virtual.
I'm with you.
27% said otherwise.
27% said virtual, correct. Correct. So any other discussion on the motion presented?
So, uh, just as a, as a, uh, point of clarification, we are talking about that if, uh, this motion is to go back five days a week, that there is also the virtual offering as well.
Absolutely, sir.
So it's my understanding that five day a week in person would mean that the virtual, there would be teachers assigned to 100% virtual classes and they would have all virtual kids, right?
As Kevin described earlier, there will be some schedule changes that the virtual will, um, have to adhere to. Uh, having so-and-so as a teacher now, if they choose to go virtual, they're going to have, they may have somebody else. So hence the agreeance, um, of the two weeks to get those schedules, uh, um, in order and be ready to go 100% on the 25th. Any other discussion? Sarah, would you like to ta- take a vote on the amendment on the floor?
Okay, Tim?
Ah, I had to be first, didn't I? All right, so the motion on the floor.
Point of order. Point of order, this, this would not be an amendment. This would be a vote on the motion.
I said amendment, I apologize. A vote on the motion on the floor.
So the motion on the floor that we're voting on now is five days a week for K through five.
Starting, starting, starting 25th, correct.
Yes.
Craig?
Nay.
Dana?
Yes.
Um, I'll vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
With a six to one vote, the motion passes.
So I would like to make a motion that we, um, take the health department director's, officers' advice and have our sixth through 12th grade kids go back, um, virtual hybrid two days a week.
I would second that.
Just writing this down.
Just, uh, just for a discussion explanation, besides the fact that, uh, that seems like what the health department officer thought would be the safest, I think it will, um, give, um, the virtual kids the best opportunity to have a good virtual experience. And it, and that's still really important to us to make sure that they, because there's enough kids that still want that virtual experience. And I think that we could move to a more, um, in-person in a month or two, when the numbers, the percentages go down. You know, this isn't, I think we could move to, to that farther. So I, that's just why I think that's the best thing to do for me.
Dawn?
Um, when, as we get ready to vote on that motion, I want everyone to consider that stability is very important in a child's life. And if we change what they're currently doing to this, when our goal is to be all in person, then we would be changing it again. And that seems disruptive to me. I feel that COVID is not going away. And we, this is our new normal. We need to be all in person and realize that there will be points of quarantine. And virtual will always be a part of our education format.
I, I think at this point in our, uh, discussion, uh, this is something that came up in the fall, but I'd like to just reiterate it. It's only going to be approximately another five to six weeks before our staff is completely vaccinated. Uh, after the first vaccination, if it comes in, in, uh, early February, uh, they would be 90, 90 or 95% protected. So what I would suggest we do is we continue virtual until, uh, after the first vaccination. And at that point, then I think for the, uh, for the, uh, health and, and, uh, well-being of the, of the students, uh, I would suggest then we follow what Abby is suggesting. So it would only be approximately another three weeks, uh, before we'd have, uh, our, our faculty and staff, uh, uh, prepared and, uh, ready to go. And we would have, uh, a great more, a lot more stability in the classroom. Because the, the faculty would not have to worry as much about the errant student who's not paying attention, who is, who is, uh, is not necessarily even willing to wear a mask. And for that reason, I would suggest we, we go with the idea of remaining virtual for just a short time. And then at that point, uh, we could, we could move to Abby's, uh, uh, proposal. That would be my suggestion.
So just my own two cents on what Craig said, um, I, I would ask to set the bar, not, not follow. Um, we're now, well, a month, month and a half, we're going to have vaccinations. Then we're going to go a month, month and a half and the new word's going to be X amount of time. We're going to have vaccinations for everybody. So let's postpone school for that long. Guys, let's set the bar here, okay? It's, it's time, our community has, um, answered. They've been asked a question, they've been answered or they have answered. Um, it's beyond, uh, data upon data. Um, this is, uh, very harmful. Don't get me wrong, this is very harmful for 55 and older. Um, almost 98% of deaths in the state of Michigan are 55 and older. Okay, 55 and older with two or more underlying conditions. Okay, our students' education, we, we've put it off for 10 months. We need to get back on track because the next thing we're going to start up, start talking about tomorrow is how are we going to catch these students up? Everybody is behind. I don't care if you have straight A's. You're getting two classes a week instead of a normal five. Okay, I mean, it's, we got to start somewhere and get these kids back on track. We're going to, we're going to be talking about summer school in a minute. We're going to be talking about a lot of other stuff. So I ask for you guys to take that in consideration. Time to set the bar in our area and have all the other districts look at us. How is Penfield doing it?
I, I think. Can I add to that as well? Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just, I feel like we've had all of these surveys and we've had petitions and all of this stuff and we're not listening to our parents. And we need to listen to our community because that's why we serve on this board is to serve our community and to serve these students. And I just feel like, once again, we're, we're not listening to them and we need to, when we, when we decide, uh, how we're going to vote and what we're going to vote on, we need to take that into consideration.
So I think that's a really good point, Dana. One of the reasons that I like the two day a week hybrid, um, is because there are our parents that I've talked to that, um, have had their kids in schools that were five days or four days. And the kids, the class, class will get quarantined, the kid will go home, they go back. And the kid was getting bounced back and forth and back and forth because the room was so full that there wasn't enough social distancing. And with the tracing, that child was, that was very difficult for the child for that reason. And I think that's one of the reasons I like the two day a week because it can provide more social distancing. And it gives a gap in between, um, it gets the kids back in school part of the time and they're learning the other two days. They have content, um, that they should have content. So I agree with you. I think that that's why I think in two days a week now, and, uh, when we get everybody, um, vaccinated, that wants to be, uh, go back five days a week. Anyway.
Thank you, thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. Any more discussion on the tabled motion? On the motion on the floors, excuse me.
I have a question with the motion on the floor. Um, this gets voted on if some, is it get voted down before someone can offer a different motion?
That's correct.
We have to address the motion present first. Any other discussion on the proposed six through 12 hybrid?
Um, I'm just, I want to just refer back to our expert that was in here with the health department. And this recommendation, this option is within their recommendation. They think that secondary can do some school, but we still need to take precautions. We never discussed like, um, unstructured times, like entering, exiting the building. I think that this option will reduce the numbers enough to make those settings more safe for kids. And so we should start here, um, by reducing the numbers as much as we can with this option. And then, um, in the future, look at adding more on.
Thank you, Sarah. You can put your hand down now. Every time I look over there, your hands up. I, I apologize. Um, any other discussion on this? Kevin's falling out of his chair.
Lights are going out on me.
All right, if there's no other discussion, Sarah, I would like you to take a vote on the six through 12 hybrid option.
Okay, um, Craig?
Is there?
Craig?
Nay.
Dana?
No.
Sarah, I vote yes. Jeff?
No.
Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Tim?
No.
Motion did not pass on a vote of five to two.
I think it was, uh, four to three, but that's okay. I think Greg, Craig voted no and Sarah and I. Was that right, Sarah?
You and I voted yes, everybody else voted no.
Craig voted no.
I'm sorry, my fault, it's too late at night.
I hear you. Is there another motion offered?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, six through 12 goes back four days, Monday through Thursday. And Friday is used for a service day.
So we're on the same page, Dawn, Friday?
Along with, um, along with a virtual option. Where if they do not want their students to come back to school, there will be a virtual choice.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, you mean Friday being a, uh, a class day? A, or excuse me, a, uh, office hours as, as we're calling it right now?
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Kevin, that's, that's needed logistically, right? I mean, five days isn't logistically an option right now?
With one day a week for virtual, that's that Friday.
And it's.
Yeah, it, well, there's, there's not going to be any other virtual but that one day.
Okay.
Four days a week. So yeah, the, if we didn't have that one day, the, um, virtual kids wouldn't have any time with, um, connection, uh, content specific with their teacher. So yeah, that one day is needed. Two days would be better, but one day will be suffice.
But just to stand corrected, in the same email received on Friday, you have already looked into, uh, E2020 and other virtual options outside. Correct?
Absolutely, because.
So there will be options other than just Friday?
Well, we're looking at, like we just talked about, even not just, uh, E twenty twenty, but virtual, uh, K twelve. Virtual to where, uh, we pay for those students to have that class with the teacher and we have a different, so yes. Those, those are all going to be coming on the table.
So I just want to stand corrected in our vote tonight, um, we're not voting for one day of virtual. There is other options that have been brought from the superintendent. Um, other virtual options outside of our school district.
And the only.
I would have to question the effectiveness though of that versus having two days for, uh, teachers with, uh, virtual students.
Trevor, Trevor, um, has also, uh, brought the question as to if we go still be able to count those students. And that is also still being checked into, to where if we have to do E twenty twenty, we could still count the students. But four out of five days doing virtual, we're not sure if we can count those students or not. So that's why those are still options. That's why they're still options.
So can I just clarify one thing? Um, is there a second on this motion?
Not yet.
I think, um, I, I don't know how long you want to wait for a second, but I would just say. The reason that I can't put a second on it is because I really think that, um, if those parents. That wanted their kids to go full-time or four days a week, knew that they were asking. Another group of children to have that much less. Education available virtually until we get something else in place. I do, I doubt they would. I doubt they would want to, I think they would make a different choice.
So Abby, is this the, is this where I could amend the, amend it to say? Then like I nominate like that, or I'm sorry, I move that we, uh, go three days a week in person, two days a week virtual. Giving the administration time to set up, uh, additional virtual, um. Uh, opportunities for these children, but with a deadline of, say, three weeks.
I would second that motion. Could you clarify the deadline thing though? Do we have to set a deadline on it?
I just don't want this dragging on and on, like, I just, I mean, I, I just, I just want some type, some, I like. I'm very, like, I'm a math person, I'm not an ELA person, I like, I like right and wrong answers, I like parameters, I like rules and I like black and white.
So one of the nice things is, once a month, Jerry brings us that report and then once a month, we're required to have this discussion. So we, we do get a chance to, um, adjust every month. If that, if that helps.
First second, let's make sure we know what we're doing. Don had motion Monday through Thursday with Friday being virtual. We have an amendment for Monday through Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for virtual. Do I have a second?
I, Don and I both seconded that.
There was no support on the floor for the, uh, four days a week.
We did not get a second, Craig.
I'm not sure the, how the, the flow goes, but I would second the, uh, the four days.
I think she already amended it, Tim.
It's already been amended, we're going to have to vote on this before we move any further and then if somebody wants to bring up another motion. Then they can do so at this time. So as of right now, the discussion is Monday through Wednesday, three days in person. Two days virtual, starting January twenty-fifth. With virtual being an option and this is for six through twelve. Any discussion?
I, I have a question on that, so the, the, the three days that people are there in person, the kids are there in person.
Correct.
Two days, what do the in-person kids do?
They will have virtual content from.
They would have virtual, okay.
Any other discussion?
Are we going to put a time like the to be revisited on the February eighth committee of a whole meeting or something like that? Abby, I'm kind of leaning toward you.
I would suggest not putting time limits, um, who knows what's going to happen if our. My, my opinion, we're, we're aboard here, let's, let's work together, my two cents is if three weeks from now. We drop down to say three percent. Um, and there, there's option of moving forward, I, I'm just giving an option. Um, I, I, I don't think we, I don't think we should tie ourselves to a deadline.
I would agree, I think our experience has been that COVID, it, it moves so fast. It's really hard to say what it's going to look like in a few weeks.
Let's go one step at a time, um, you know. The twenty-six, we may have to shut something down and, and, uh, the. First of next month, we may be able to open up, I mean, let, let's just go one step at a time, let's get our awesome, uh, administrative. His staff, everybody all on board, let's get food in the, in the cafeterias, let's. I, I, I would say, let's just, let's just move one step at a time, thank you Abby for, for clarifying that. Um.
And did I say in this motion to begin January twenty-fifth with this?
Yes, ma'am. So if there's no other discussion, the motion on the floor, six through twelve grades. Monday through Wednesday will be in person, Thursday and Friday will be virtual. And this will start January twenty-fifth. Sarah, would you like to take a vote?
If, if I could ask one more question, uh, what I would suggest is that, uh, the Monday through Wednesday not be something that's hard and fast. That we leave it up to the superintendent and his team to determine whether or not Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, whatever would work best for them, uh, but three days a week. I, I would, I would ask that that be considered as a, uh, as an amendment or a change in the language.
Hence, just, uh, to comment on that, Craig, if you don't mind, um, hence the conversation last week of. Kevin asking for the end of the week such as Friday. Um, for virtual, using the, the end of the week as a three, in this case, a four-day weekend. For any, uh, cleaning, anything to be done within the school, um, that has been requested, so. Um, Monday through Wednesday, I think is sufficient.
Sure. The, uh, with the discussion with the administrators today. They were asking for Monday, Wednesday, Friday and virtual Tuesday, Thursday.
I think that's just going to be a scheduling nightmare. I appreciate it.
About shouldn't we, shouldn't we, uh, let the experts decide on that?
I will say that, like, that's, I mean. When you, when you're looking at some of the, the ways that others go, like, for example, Bath, Math and Science Center are doing it, um, like. Office hours, everything is Friday, so I think to keep it cohesive, I think the virtual needs to be on the Friday as well. Um, if it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Wednesday, Friday are virtual, I get it, but I think Friday needs to be the virtual.
That was actually one of the recommendations from one of the administrators, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Would that be a friendly amendment? Is that what you're suggesting, Dana?
I mean, if, if, if Kevin, if you say the administration asked for, um, a, a gap day in there. I, I would go with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, with Wednesday and Friday being virtual.
What's the reasoning for the gap? Any idea or?
Yeah, it was an opportunity for the kids on Monday and Tuesday. To have that Wednesday for virtual. And then the in-person students seeing the teacher again that week on Thursday. And the virtual student to take what they get on Wednesday to follow up with the teacher on Friday.
Okay, Tom, you, Mr. Faber has raised his hand, maybe he can shed some light on this, Mr. Faber?
I'm just, uh, one other, it's a small segment of the population, but another part of the population we're considering. Um, when I look at it, uh, Career Center, beginning Monday, the eighteenth, is returning in a hybrid setting. They've already communicated with us, these are our kids that who will be going Monday, Tuesday, these are our kids who will be going Thursday, Friday. Uh, and, and if we go three days a week, we're not going to align perfectly and that's okay. Um, but I guess, uh, trying to align as much as possible, so that if we got kids in the building Wednesday, they're not even going to, you know. They're only doing a half day with us, they're not even going to the Career Center, um, you know, the more we can align, the better. Like, the math, as Dana mentioned, the Math and Science Center, they're doing one hundred percent virtual for the semester. Um, as far as, and it doesn't interfere with us as far as, you know, they're doing it within the timeframe of the, of the school day that's normally scheduled for them. So that's not a, it's not a factor we need to consider, but just, it's one thing impacts my building, obviously not, uh, every building in the district, but that's one piece.
So what Tom just shared means the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, in-person, Thursday, Friday. Aligns better with high school students. Is that correct, Tom?
I think I heard him.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Yes.
Is. If we had, if we had high school on Wednesday, the morning, math and science wouldn't even have class. Career Center wouldn't even have class, so they wouldn't even show up until eleven fifty.
I'd like to, to, um, ask a question, so. Um, what is the Career Center's schedule? Are they doing four days?
They are doing, they're doing a hybrid four days, meaning Monday and Tuesday, they have essentially half of their population. Thursday, Friday, they see the other half of their population. And like I said, they've already shared with us our list of, here's the Penfield students that attend the Career Center, these are the kids that are coming Monday, Tuesday. These are the kids that are coming Thursday, Friday to the Career Center.
Okay, so stand corrected right there. If they're going to the Career Center on Monday and Tuesday, they're not going to go to the Career Center on Thursday?
That's correct, but half of them, some of them will, but I'm saying, we've got about hu- one hundred and twenty-eight kids there. They've divided our kids in half, so some of our kids go Monday, Tuesday, some go Thursday, Friday, none will go on Wednesday.
This is the reason I suggested the four days with one day virtual. Um, with us having students at the Career Center and the Math and Science Center. That is going to lessen the number of students in our high school and. I feel like if we could get on the same schedule as. The Career Center, it will cause things to run more smoothly.
We'll be losing too many virtual, uh, uh, students though, that want the two, two days of, of education if we go four days.
Yeah, I'd be concerned that we have thirty percent of people that want virtual, um, one day a week isn't going to cut it.
Until we find another option for virtual.
Tom, could you answer a question? Is the Career Center offering virtual?
I, I, I don't believe so, they get, what they shared with us was a list of their, uh, their movement. To that.
I can help with that, Tom.
I did, I didn't get a list, yeah, I didn't get a list of kids staying virtual, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, um, as part of ICC, I, I represent the district at the curriculum council meetings and the, um. Career tech people are funded by federal monies, they're not even legally supposed to do virtual, um, teaching. And because they're a hands-on dynamic also, so they've been having this debate about that. That's why they're coming back blended, that was the compromise. So, um, yeah, it's kind of a, uh, a mess for those guys, but, um. Yeah, they, they've, they've decided to do a schedule and split us and that's kind of unique, Tom. That puts us in a unique place with that, but bottom line is, they, they will not be able to go full virtual anymore.
So we have a motion on the floor, right?
We do, Monday through Thursday in person, Friday office hours. Is what we have on the mo- on the floor right now, um, we do not have an amendment to that.
No, that was amended by me, Jeff, that was amended to Monday through, Monday, Tuesday, uh. I just don't know what the days of the week anymore, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
And I, um, seconded that amendment.
Yes, and yeah, and Abby seconded it and I, like, so I just don't know what days we're choosing. I'm good with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, I'm good with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You know, you guys tell me and I'll, I'll say it.
It sounds like Tom prefers Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, so my motion once again, um, was, I was amended to say. I motion that we go to school three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, with Wednesday and Friday as a virtual option for our sixth through twelfth grade.
All right, that was motion by Dana, seconded by Abby. Any other discussion on three days a week in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday? Uh, Wednesday, Friday being class time slash virtual. With a virtual option for six through twelve. Any other discussion? Sarah, would you like to take a vote? Craig, do you have your mic on? Is there something you'd like to say?
I'm just waiting for Sarah.
No, I just, I, I started talking without my mute button off, Dana?
Yes.
Um, I'm going to vote no, Jeff?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Craig?
No.
What'd you end up with?
Four to three.
Motion passes. All right, that was a big decision, guys. Um. It's a, it's a step forward, I appreciate it. Um, question real quick. Do we want to, uh, do we want to table this or we want to keep moving? It looks like we've got, uh, three other agenda items, uh, for presentation or discussion.
The, um, the oh-four, which is about the leave, is the board's action item. That approves for the actual staff to still get their leave and be paid. If it's COVID related, and Gina speaks to that. The one after that, the yearly board meeting, we have to discuss that calendar. Cause it has to be approved as an action item by the board.
I just read that, let's, let's keep moving, if we could keep our questions, um, to a minimum. Uh, timeframe, I don't want to stop anybody from any questions, but if we can keep moving, um, would be greatly appreciated. So, uh, six point oh-four COVID FF CRA leave, Kevin, if you want to take over?
Yep, hey, and Gina, you go ahead and share how this affects the, um. Our funding?
Yeah, so what that leave is, is the federal government had put out, um, there was some, um. Two different leaves that went on that were, if it was COVID related, it extended the FMLA leave. And, um, it had some requirements, whether you were caretaking for somebody that, um, had COVID. Whether you yourself, um, were positive for COVID or in quarantine. It just added you some additional leave time and some, there's some pay, um, associated with that. So that was to end on December thirty-first and the government has come out and said that, that, um, we can extend that. It's up to the employer, but that can be extended through March, um, through the end of March. And what that would be is, um. It doesn't give any employees any extra time, it's just if they had not used their leave up until this time. They would be able to use that leave up through the end of March. So for instance, I'll just use myself, I did not, I never was in quarantine and I never had to take any of that leave, right? So say tomorrow I am in quarantine, I could come back to the district, I would be entitled to use my. So say tomorrow I am in quarantine, I could come back to the district, I would be entitled to use my leave days between now and the end of March. Now, somebody that, say, somebody in November was positive for COVID, did take their leave days, they've already um exhausted their leave days. They don't get any additional days to carry him to the end of March, but it's just a carryover of those benefits for people that that have not exhausted them. And really, it's at the discretion of the employer and of the board. And we were um, given the guidance through Truen Law, who is our um lawyers to have this come before the board and for the board to make that decision on whether to extend those benefits um through the end of March.
So we're asking the board for approval to do that?
I would make that motion, that we extend uh, usage of the leave in order for uh coverage of those who are infected with COVID.
Thank you, Craig. I will second.
Okay, then to, to vote, um, I would say yes, Jeff. Oh, sorry.
We gotta open discussion first. Anybody have any questions? Nothing. Sarah, would you like to take a vote? Thank you.
All right, start, Sarah, I say yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, seven to nothing. Thank you, guys. Moving on, six point oh-five yearly Board of Education meeting calendar.
So there are, the uh, regular meeting, regular board meeting has been scheduled for the third Monday of each month. So we um, I would think that the board would wanna keep the regular board meeting. The question becomes, a committee as a whole was created, and that's the second mm, second Monday of each month. The board can uh, vote to keep that on the schedule, or go back to having regular committees? Or um, that's, that's the question right now is to create in this calendar.
I would, I would make a motion that we continue to operate with Committee of the Whole every second Monday of the month.
In the regular board meeting?
And keep the regular board meeting on the third.
And keep the regular board meeting on the third month, uh, for third Monday of the month.
Sarah, that's motion made by Craig, seconded by Dana. Uh, any discussion? I would like to just add, this is very good. Um, my assumption will, we might even have more than that coming up. Uh, we got a lot of stuff coming up, we have uh, board goals coming up, we have superintendent goals coming up, we're gonna have a lot of work coming up, so um, I would encourage everybody to uh, at least plan for those two Mondays. Please.
I would suggest that the reason why we created the Committee of the Whole was to, in fact, do that work during that second Monday of the month. And so um, I, I would only say, Jeff, that uh, we tried to limit the amount of ti- uh, the number of meetings per month, but make them longer before. Uh, but that, of course, is left up to the, the sentiment of the whole board.
I appreciate that, Craig. Uh, our only downfall is, uh, we changed January to two board meetings, and we have a lot of uh, business to conduct in January, so we're not gonna have a, a committee of the whole. Um, time-wise, we have uh, uh, we have uh, board goals to get done and superintendent goals to get done um, as soon as possible. So I'll, I'll work with each of you guys on that, that's, that's a whole different topic, but I would encourage everybody to uh, please consider keeping our, our Committee of the Whole uh, meetings along with our, our board meetings.
Nope, I was just gonna, I was headed to the next one. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Any other discussion? Sarah, if you'd like to take a vote?
Sorry, I wasn't on mute again. Jeff?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Hi.
Dana?
Yes.
And Sarah, yes.
Thank you, guys. On a vote of seven to zero, motion passes. Uh, we will move on to six point oh-six, which is Board Remote Meetings.
Now, that is one that you could um, you could table, and we meet the same way for the eighteenth. The um, governor, or should I say, the uh, Michigan Health Department of Health is going to come out with some of those restrictions being um, loosened based on what Eric said today. And yet, we may wanna hear from them this week before that decision is being made. Uh, my understanding is, they may come out and say that you can have fifty people, like, right now is only ten. So, having that uh, board meeting on the eighteenth virtually would help save um, that decision from being changed once the um Health Department comes out, so you could table that one.
I would move, I would move to keep, keep going forward with this. Um, I would make a suggestion to um, have a, have a motion passed, and if uh, uh, guidelines uh, didn't foresee us uh, being able to do in-person next Monday, then, then we can, we can address that um, in a, in a timely fashion. Um, but I would, I would encourage to move forward with this.
And you don't need an action on um, on that one.
Why is that?
Because it's already a remote meeting, and if we're gonna be meeting remote on the eighteenth, then you can have a discussion about meetings thereafter.
Unless we have a motion, otherwise.
I think, Jeff, you were asking for a motion to um, have it in-person, is that what you were doing?
To schedule in-person as of right now, and if we have to change that, then, then we can change that.
I'll second that motion, Jeff.
Uh, motion by Abby, seconded by Dana. The motion is to schedule our meeting next Monday, the uh, eighteenth, uh, in-person, if permitted. Any discussion? Sarah, if you'd like to carry a vote?
Okay, um, Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
Hi.
Dana?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Jeff?
Yes. Vote of seven to nothing, uh, motion passes, uh, next Monday will be in-person. Uh, moving on, seven point oh-one, comments from the public. Do we have anybody still awake wanting to talk to us?
Uh, that third person has not shown up, so you're all set.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on, eight point oh-one, Superintendent Comments?
Yep, as I had mentioned earlier, um, welcome to all of our new members who took the oath today, and I will also add that next week is gonna be the recognition of retired teachers, administrators, district staff that will take place during the actual board meeting, so it's not gonna be before, um, it's gonna be actually taking place during. And uh, Eric had mentioned the district staff vaccinations, that they'll begin soon. The one thing that he didn't mention is that there are mass vaccinations that are occurring at the Y. And there's been times that they have been short of the number of people to show up in their window to get those vaccinations. If they get that shortage again, they've already done this for Battle Creek Public Schools, their K through three teachers were able to go in and get some vac- get their first vaccination. Uh, Eric's going to call me, and we'll take forty-eight hours, I told him we can, we need at least two days. But then that would be a professional development day to get the teachers in there to get their vaccinations. That's only if it happens early, meaning if it happens before February. Well, the chances of that occurring are slim, but it could, it could happen. So I want the board to be aware of the fact that if a notification goes out to you in an email and a text message saying this window is open for vaccinations for the teachers, we are going to take that opportunity to get them in there, which would be before February. Um, and then the last thing is that um, it's been a long journey to get here. And that we appreciate the fact the community has done a lot of work with getting numbers down to get to where we are uh, today. The planning, the extra hours and planning, this shift that's starting to occur is uh, also going to be new planning and new work for not just our district staff, but for our board. So, I'll only leave our board, as we've done with our administrative team, with the advice to first seek to understand, and then to be understood. Thank you for all your hard work. I look forward as we uh, continue through the remainder of the year with bringing things to the forefront. That's all for me.
Thank you, Kevin. Moving on to nine point oh-one, Board Comments. Anyone on the board have anything they would like to say?
I do, um, I just want to extend the gratitude to everyone involved in making all of these decisions, and welcome our new board members, and appreciate all their work that they've already done prior to this meeting. Um, I would like our board to keep in mind that you know, five percent of a thousand students is fifty students. When it comes to this attendance and contact, you know, that's two plus full classrooms of students that we're not hearing from. Um, I really appreciate the in-person vote tonight. Also, in the future, these class sizes are something that we need to really keep in the forefront of our mind when making decisions on school of choice, the amount of students that we allow. Um, I love to be able to support equal learning for all, and school of choice does provide that, although um, with the concerns of the COVID and, you know, what it may look like next fall, the decisions of school of choice is something that we make in this, in the spring. So, we need to make sure that we are aware of how many classrooms in each building for each grade, and how many students for a total amount when it comes to what we can open up for. Um, just to keep that in mind and, and thought, and uh, I'm, I'm really excited to be moving forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dawn.
I didn't raise my hand, but can I?
Go ahead, Abby.
All right, I just wanna say, um, good job, you guys, for your very first meeting, you just made a whole lot of different decisions, and I appreciate your discussion and your thoughtfulness, um, so just thank you very much, it was pleasant.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to, to say that, um, I hope that the board is also a good example for the uh, the community in terms of uh, making sure that we're promoting social distancing and wearing masks. Uh, this is gonna be a, a real key, because anytime we have more exposure, we're gonna have the chances of severe illness. So I would ask everybody on the board to, to make it their, uh, make a good example for the, the public, uh, in terms of wearing masks and promoting uh, uh, the uh, necessity of, in the future even, uh, making sure that we're thinking about uh, uh, outside of, outside of the uh, even the public school setting, that, that we have to be mindful of uh, any kind of social setting where, as Mr. Pestle said, that we can pass the uh, disease which can result in a serious illness, if not death.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? I would like to address, uh, first and foremost, thank you, everybody, for the unanimous vote to put me in this seat. Uh, Dawn, I thank you very much for everything that you've, you've done. Um, willing to step down and, and focus on a lot of, a lot of personal stuff, um, I thank you. I, I thank you, guys. Um, a- at this point, I would like to address to our community. Um, we've listened to you, so now, please listen to me. We need your help, we are a team. We are all in this together. As tonight has been a very difficult decision by the Penfield Board of Education, we believe this is a positive step forward. We need you more than ever for our community to work together. Let's stand by example and show that our students and staff can follow these rules that will be set in place and make this education plan work. Let's be the forefront, let's show everybody how it's done. I appreciate everybody, I appreciate our staff. Kevin, thank you for joining us, um, everybody else joining us tonight. Um, with that, if nobody has anything else, we will move to ten point oh-one, if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dana.
I'll second that.
Second by Abby. Sarah, go ahead with a vote, please.
Okay, uh, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Abby?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Craig?
He left.
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
And Sarah, yes.
Yes, with a vote of six to absent, uh, we we pass to adjourn. I thank you, everybody, have a good night. Thanks for hanging out until eleven o'clock, have a good night.